It is being televised and we ask that you, if you are going to speak, to step to the podium and there's a microphone there. You push the button to start the microphone so we can all hear you so it can be recorded as well. The rules of the public hearing are that for each case, there will be a public hearing. We ask that the applicant keep their presentation under 10 minutes. They may reserve two minutes as a rebuttal after the others have spoken. We ask that the public keep their comments to two minutes unless they have previously requested in writing five minutes as a representative of a group or organization. The appeal of the decision from the Historic Zoning Commission may be had pursuant to the provision of Section 2.68030 of the Metropolitan Code of Laws. A notice is hereby given that a final hearing before this commission is appealable to the Chancery Court of Davidson County or the Circuit Court of Davidson County vis a statutory writ of centauri. You are advised to seek your own independent legal counsel to ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements are met. You should also seek independent legal advice regarding the applicability of the writ of certiori to the specific decision of the Historic Zoning Commission. For the consent agenda, items on the consent agenda will be voted on at one single time. So if your application is on the consent agenda, it will be voted on at once. Excuse me. No individual public hearing will be held. Normal commission. Sorry.
That's right.
Yeah, you want to finish? You want to finish? Thank you. I'm good.
Okay. The first thing we'll be talking about is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the commission or the audience requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda.
Thank you, Brian. It's the last time I get a handful of almonds before I come in here. So, okay. Moving on to...
Yes, for the agenda, there's a couple of requested changes. 1117 McKenney, that project is requested to be deferred and 1414 Calvin has requested to be removed from the agenda. Well, first we'll need a vote on the adoption of the agenda if you want to accept that deferral and removal.
Motion?
Okay. So today on consent, we have... Come on. Okay. 1407 Greenwood Avenue, new construction of an addition. 217 Broadway signage. 1724 Linden Avenue, new construction of an addition with a setback determination. 928 Montrose Avenue, new construction of an addition. 1910 19th Avenue South, new construction of an addition and a detached accessory dwelling unit. 1803 Cedar Lane, new construction of an addition. 1404 North 14th Street, new construction of an addition. 1503 Clayton Avenue, new construction of an outbuilding detached accessory dwelling unit. 1414 Calvin has been withdrawn. Staff recommends approval of the items on the consent agenda with the applicable conditions finding the applications to meet the design guidelines of their respective overlays.
Do we have any public comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none, do I hear a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. So our first...
So next we have design guidelines for a new type of historic overlay. So you're just really looking at the design guidelines today. But to give you a little background, we started the process of a new type of overlay that would allow us to landmark interiors. Not something that you see typically. It's not something we're going to have a lot of. Most of those will probably be metro-owned buildings with maybe a public space that is landmarked. Could be one specific interior space, could be all the interior spaces. Each of those will be decided as they come to you. So this is just an approval of those guidelines and then if and when we have someone ready to actually designate an interior space, we'll come back to those guidelines again in reference with that specific property. Any questions for me?
So there, I know you said it's the type of ones. Would there be ones that would be maybe on the National Register? Is that what would lift them up to that potential, you know? Is that what would lift them up to it or just how would it be determined which ones get the interior overlay?
It'll depend a lot on the property owner. So it's not something that means that a property is more historic than another property, just that the owner is willing to designate an interior, which again is something you don't usually see. A lot of times, buildings are important as a collection and the character of the neighborhood is what's important. But some of them, and maybe it's a library or maybe it's the customs house, that interior lobby, that public space, might be important to keep as well.
Okay.
But it'll follow the same type of designation in the other properties, just we'd be looking at the interior instead of the exterior.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure so if someone else is in it, they understand, oh, I'm in overlay, but I didn't know. Just they can understand if it was specific properties that would elevate it to that. But understand as far as our role as commission, how we would look at it.
Is there any public comment on the proposed overlay? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on that. Do I hear a motion for approval of the historic overlay landmark for interiors?
Second.
All in favor? All right. The next item on the agenda is previously deferred items.
This is 1406 Fifth Avenue North. I presented this project at the last commission meeting in October 2018, but the applicant deferred before the commission made a decision. I'm going to re-present the project just because it is a little bit complicated and just to make sure that everybody here is on the same page. So according to the Germantown Historic District National Register nomination, 1406 Fifth Avenue North was constructed circa 1850 and is a one-story brick-raised cottage with a daylight basement. However, the structure could date back as early as the 1830s, making it one of the oldest homes in Germantown. The applicant is proposing a rear addition and a front porch addition. The applicant is proposing a rear addition that is eight feet four inches taller than the historic house. The Historic Zoning Commission approved the same addition in 2015 under the old design guidelines for Germantown, but the addition was never constructed. So just as a reminder, in October of 2017, the Historic Zoning, maybe September of 2017, the Historic Zoning Commission adopted new design guidelines for the Germantown neighborhood. So the previous approvals for this project were done during the old design guidelines, what we're now looking at under the new design guidelines. So in 2016 and 2018, the commission and staff approved a DADU at the rear of the lot. Staff re-looked at the DADU and it met all of the new design guidelines and so we've reissued the permit for the DADU at the rear of the lot. So that's not part of the proposal today. In 2015, the commission approved this portion of the addition, which is the portion that does go eight feet four inches taller than the historic house. And then in 2016, the commission approved a front porch addition and a side addition or just an additional porch addition on that side. I'll just quickly discuss the front porch, which staff is supportive of the proposal for the new front porch. The existing partial width front porch was constructed in 2008 and is therefore not historic. The 1914 Sanborn map and a 1970s photo show that the house previously had a full width front porch. The applicant proposes to construct a full width front porch with a footprint matching that of the porch shown on the 1914 Sanborn map. You can see in the 1897 Sanborn map that previously, prior to 1914, the house had just a small stoop. But staff found that, you know, as early as 1914, there was a full width front porch and so that that was enough of a historic element that it could be restored to the house. So staff is supportive of the proposal for the new front porch. The applicant is also proposing to demolish the exterior addition at the rear. Staff finds that the portions that are proposed to demolish do not contribute to the historic character of the historic house or to the Germantown historic preservation overlay. So we're supportive of the proposed partial width or the partial demolition. The commission approved the rear addition that is eight feet four inches taller than the historic house in 2015. But that permit has since expired and just for your information, our permits are generally valid for one year, for 12 months. And after that time, we take a look at it to make sure that the approval still meets the design guidelines. So again, in October 2017, MHCZC adopted revised design guidelines for the Germantown overlay and so staff reexamined the proposed project under these new design guidelines. The applicant is proposing a rear addition that is eight feet four inches taller than the historic house. The addition is inset two feet on both sides, which is appropriate. It will increase the footprint of the existing structure by about 650 square feet and that's after the non-contributing additions are demolished. Examining the proposed addition under the current design guidelines, staff finds that its insets, width, depth, and footprint do meet the design guidelines. The height of the addition, however, does not meet the current design guidelines. The previous Germantown design guidelines did not discuss situations when additions could go taller than the historic house. They did not provide a maximum additional height or parameters for when taller additions would be appropriate. Many of the other MHCZ design guidelines for residential neighborhoods state in italicized print that additions may extend up to four feet taller than the historic house at a distance 40 feet back from the front of the house. So just to summarize, the previous Germantown design guidelines did not discuss at all when it would be appropriate to have a taller addition. But in 2015, we looked at kind of what the other design guidelines said for taller additions. So the 2015 staff recommendation, staff recommended that because the addition was more than 50 feet back from the front of the house, the addition should be limited to five feet taller. However, the commission did approve the addition at eight feet four inches taller. The current design guidelines, the ones that we're looking at now, do state in italicized print that when a taller addition is the only option, addition can go up to four feet taller than the historic house at a .40 feet back from the front. So now that there's that specific information, staff finds that addition that is taller could be appropriate for this lot because of the slope of the lot. So you can see here from these side elevations that the site is steeply sloped up towards the back of the lot. There is a difference of about 10 feet from the front of the lot to the rear. The lot's ground is rock, making it difficult and expensive to dig and level the slope. However, staff is not supportive of the proposed height of the addition, which is a two-story addition on a one-story house. Since the current design guidelines specifically limit the height of the additions to no more than four feet taller than the historic house, staff recommends that the addition be reduced in height by four feet four inches in order to meet the current design guidelines. Staff finds that the proposed rear addition's height is out of scale with this one-story with a raised basement house and that reducing the addition's height to be no taller than four feet taller than the historic house will make the addition more compatible with the historic house. The applicant is proposing the addition to be all siding without any masonry. The design guidelines state that all façades should be at least 80% brick. A greater percentage of accent materials may be used on façades that are not visible from the public right away. The applicant is proposing an addition that is entirely siding, making the left and north facade 52% brick, did I write that right? 52% brick and the right south facade 47% brick. The rear facade is almost entirely siding with only two feet of brick walls at the back of the historic building being brick. Staff finds that in this case, having an addition that contains no brick is appropriate because historically, the historic house had substantial amount of non-brick façades. So you can see here in these Sanborn maps, the brick part, or I'm sorry, the pink part is typically indicating a masonry or brick material and then the yellow part typically means some sort of frame material. So you can see historically, this house had a mixture of both brick and siding and kind of those later additions, whether they're open porches or, you know, rear additions did have siding or some sort of open frame material and staff therefore finds that what the architect has proposed for the materials is appropriate. These are some renderings provided by the architect. I believe that they're going to talk about these further. This is submitted by the architect for supplemental information, so he'll go back to that. And here's an image submitted by the architect as well, I think, showing kind of how much will be viewed, if at all. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the addition with the following conditions: the addition be no taller than four feet taller than the historic house. Staff approve a brick sample and roof shingle sample. Staff approve the location of the HVAC and all utilities. And staff approve all permanent landscape features. With these conditions, staff finds that proposed demolition and additions meet Sections 2, 3, 5, and 7 of the design guidelines. Happy to answer any questions and the architect is here.
Hi. Good afternoon. John Root, 753 Alockway Street. I'm the architect for the project. I'm going to try to do it in under 10 minutes. We have a lot of ground to cover. We wanted to defer because I presented this case to you guys three years ago and I know it intimately. I believe Commissioner Mosley and Commissioner Tibbs were on that original board back three years ago and we have a lot of hardships on this and the gravity of the situation that this is one of the oldest houses in Germantown does not fall on deaf ears with us. We understand the gravity and the responsibility to it. We actually had three different commission meetings and we've worked with staff for a very long time to do sensitive renovations to this project. I think she noted on the different renovations that we did to this house with the front porch, with the side porch and the DADU and the timeline of all that and given the sensitive nature of this project is actually the reason why we're here again today with the time. The homeowner put a tenant in there temporarily so he could figure out all the renovations he needed to do and unfortunately, we ran out of time because of the old guidelines. Yeah. I guess the first thing I'd like to say is, you know, I would call this a one and a half story house, not a one-story house. It's got a basement, half basement, so it's elevated up. And according to guidelines, a two-story addition is allowed on a one and a half story house. So I'll make that argument out there that I don't think it's a one-story house. Couple of other things I would like to point out to you. We talked about hardships. It is a very small house and the existing square footage of the house or existing floor plate or footprint is, I got that right here, sorry, 1,323 square feet. So in Germantown standards, that's a small house. The addition that we are proposing is only 989 square feet. The lot is only 172 feet deep and I think we are 26 feet off the sidewalk. So the addition that we are proposing is 60 feet off the front of the house and that would be 86 feet off the sidewalk. So just keep that in mind as far as numbers. I wish this door was open. I think this room is something like 80 feet long. So that's how far away the addition is from the sidewalk. She mentioned that we have exposed bedrock in the back and we have a 10-foot incline from the front to back, so making it very difficult to put an addition to this house. Once the, this is actually one of the smallest renovations we've done to a house in Germantown. It actually will make the house a three-bedroom house. Where the addition itself on the first floor is a master bedroom and the upstairs above that is two bedrooms. So with the basement, it's got kind of a media room, I'm not sure there's a bathroom down there, it's going to make this a three-bedroom house. So it's a very modest addition and this is where we kind of settled in back three years ago with staff and everybody else in that we're not trying to overbuild and we, again, we're trying to be as sensitive as possible to the fact that this house is very, very historic and very integral with the historic neighborhood. One of the drawings we put on there was showing you the difference between a 1012 and this is a, this is a topic I've gone back and forth with to this board and to staff. A lot of architects will stand up here and say, oh, we can reduce the height by 20 inches by just making it, you know, an 812 versus a 1012. Well, I think there's some character that's lost when you do that, just kind of blanket, you know, blanket, you know, we got to get the heights down. Some character is what we're trying to introduce in the addition to complement the existing house. And so I wanted to kind of throw that out there and we did this little diagram showing it what an 812 looks like. It says 1012, but that's the existing, what we've shown, drawn, and presented to you. We can reduce by 20 inches. I don't think the character's going to be the same, but you know, it is an option. But I also drew this to show you that we're not tall. We're matching the 10-foot ceilings on the existing home and bringing those back into the bedrock. Well, basically, we're pouring a foundation right on the bedrock and that our knee walls on the second floor are four feet tall, which is allowed by code. Actually, I think it says five feet, but we're kind of making it four feet because we feel like that's what you can live in. And our ceiling height is eight feet. So it leaves us with just a really small attic. We've designed that addition in a way that that hip lays back and down and away from the street to make that, I think I mentioned, 86 feet is where the highest point of this house is. So I guess the original staff recommendation back three years ago was 12 inches away from what they're recommending now. And at that time, we placed all our hardships on the board and said, we're designing a very modest, small addition to this historic house and we're trying to do it in a way and try to bring some character to the addition and we're trying to be as sensitive as possible. We are dwarfed on both sides of our house in the renderings. Those are actually, it looks kind of like a scale trick we're trying to do, but that's really how it looks. We've had two new houses on either side of us that kind of dwarf our project. And I think it was mentioned, what does this house look like from Taylor Street, kind of maybe at Fourth and Taylor or Sixth and Taylor and coming down off the hill. And so that's why we did this rendering, to show you that you really won't see much of this addition from the street. And we've shown, because we're boxed in on the two-story houses on either side of us, you'll barely see anything. So we felt like it was very sympathetic design and it accomplished our goals of our client of adding that, making it a three-bedroom house and modernizing this old house. And I feel like that's what we're here to do. We're here to save historic structures and modernize them so that they'll be here longer, you know? And so that was one of our project goals in doing the addition that we have. Because the lot size is only 172 feet and we have a garage, detached garage, we were trying to save some of the backyard for a little bit of green space. But knowingly, the further back we go, the higher the grade is, so it actually amplifies our problem. So again, that's why we limited our footprint to just under 1,000 square feet. So I think that was a comment last month that, you know, the addition was big and I just want to give you those scale numbers. Again, the footprint of the existing house is 1,323 square feet and the footprint of our addition is 989. So we're not doubling the footprint. We are adding a second floor on that addition, but again, it's modernizing the house and making it a three-bedroom house and hopefully, it'll be here for years to come. So that was kind of the goal. Again, I'm here for questions. We would like to keep the 1012 roof because we think the character of it looks nice with the existing house, but if we need to find some inches, that's a way to do it. But I'm here for any questions you might have. Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant?
Real quick, so if you change the pitch, you're saying you could get eight inches out of it?
Twenty inches.
Twenty inches out of it?
Twenty inches. Yeah, it's 20 foot wide and so you're 10 feet times two, 20 inches.
Okay. So if it was, is that still, it was 8'4" minus the 20 inches?
Yeah, so it's, the design we presented is 1012 and the dash line, well, the dash line is the 1012, sorry.
Right.
And the solid hash line is the 812. And again, showing the knee heights and the ceiling heights.
Yeah. I'm just trying to make sure I understood how close to the staff recommendation you were getting from the 20 inches.
Right.
Okay.
Right. Thank you.
That's all I got for now.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any comments from the public on behalf of this project? Please state your name and address, please.
Sonya Link, 1308 Sixth Avenue. I'm on the board, the Germantown Association Board and the Development Committee meeting and we attended last month to voice that we would appreciate adhering to the current guidelines, the revised guidelines. We did a lot of work in revising the guidelines to try to address situations like this where additions to the home should only be four feet above the historic home. So I understand the hardships and we want the house to look nice also, but you know, we really want to adhere to the guidelines so we don't start setting precedence for future projects that would have exceptions.
Thank you, Ms. Link.
Ms. Link brings up a very good point.
Anyone else wishing to speak on either for or against this project? Okay. Closed public hearing.
Ms. Link brings up a very good point that I'm a little gray on, a little fuzzy. Three years ago, when we were given the guidelines to design this, it was kind of an unspoken rule about the four-foot and distance. And I believe that the new guidelines put those in a footnote. So I don't know that the characteristics of the guidelines have changed, in my personal professional opinion. I think we've always tried to get, meet those rules, those unspoken heights and depth rules. So I'm not, I'm a little gray on new guidelines, old guidelines. Well, the old guidelines, we were still doing the same requirements of the new guidelines. So what does that mean? You know, we had an approval from the board three years ago based on an unspoken rule and now the rule's in the footnote. So I'm a little gray on that kind of, and I don't really understand what the implications of that mean. And I think my client maybe just needs some clarification on that also. He's, yeah, thank you.
Melissa, answer that. Melissa?
Sure. Yeah, I can try and clarify. So the previous design guidelines didn't mention any situation where, it just didn't talk at all about additions that go taller. So there was just no information about when it would be appropriate, how much would be appropriate. It didn't have any of that information in it. What we did in 2015, staff, the other design guidelines for most of our conservation zoning overlays had the language in italicized text that says at a .40 feet back, you can go up to four feet taller. In 2015, we looked at that and we said, well, in this case, they're going, they're 50 feet back, so maybe here, given the circumstances, staff recommended no taller than five feet. The commission approved the eight feet four inches. The current design guidelines state in the italicized text, so it's part of the kind of added supplemental information that's meant to kind of explain the design guidelines. It states that, again, the addition should be no taller than four feet at a .40 feet back. Does that clarify it, kind of what the difference between the new guidelines and then the old guidelines and the new guidelines are?
Thanks, Melissa. Discussion, commissioners?
Well, just to get it kind of started again, I guess I do struggle because it is a smaller home and, you know, it definitely is the challenge of that. But, you know, it is kind of unfortunate, it's a couple of months off too, you know, from the permit expiring. It's hard to go against, you know, the policy, you know, they just set it up and, you know, it's kind of hard to go by unless we and, you know, it's kind of hard to, to go by unless we can really come up with, you know, why this one is, um, differentiates itself. I was trying to maybe get into the one and a half story, but I'm not sure we've ever counted it that way before. I mean, unless staff can tell us, you know, but, I mean, I guess, you know, and it, it, I'm not, I'm kind of struggling coming up with ways why the policy could, we could go against it and I'm not really seeing it as much, but, uh, that's, I guess I would start off the conversation with that amongst you guys, but right now it, it seems like that's just something where we don't have a, um, a lot of valid reasons to not go with staff recommendation there. But if that turns into discussion amongst you guys, that's what I'm looking for.
So just that I have it right and understand it correctly, the staff is recommending four feet above the home, home in front, correct? They, we, the commission previously approved five feet.
Previously approved the eight feet.
Eight feet above the current house?
Yeah.
Oh.
But that was under the.
That's a lot.
Under the last policy.
Right.
They actually, I mean, and I'm reached in with Melissa, so just tell me if I've re-stated wrong, they actually recommend it five foot four, I think.
Uh, in 2015, staff recommended five feet and the commission approved eight feet four, which is.
There's the four.
The drawings are basically the same as what was approved by the commission 2015, with the exception of the porch area, which was approved later, which staff is fine with the porch area right now, so.
So Mr. Rue is coming to us again with the same plan that he had previously.
Yeah, except I don't know if he had the pitch change last time. Did you?
Sorry, maybe I could fill that question. The design is exactly the same, except for the side porch on the back and the front porch that we, that we intentionally held off because it was, we needed to do some research on what the front porch looked like back in, when the house was originally built. So the design is exactly the same, everything about it, except for that side porch you see on the bottom right of your screen and then the front porch on the house.
You had the pitch change proposal in the last one?
Last one as well, that, to go to a eight 12. No, we did not.
Okay.
Proposed an eight 12 at that time, no.
Okay.
I, I think the, the, if I remember correctly, I, I watched the YouTube video last week. The consensus was that everybody liked the, the scale and proportions of that addition to the original house.
Couple of thoughts from me. I've, since in my time on the commission, we've consistently upheld the, the guideline that we shouldn't add a two-story addition to a one-story house. I read this as a one-story house on a raised basement. And it's unfortunate that the design was approved on, under the previous guidelines, but I feel like our charge is to uphold the guidelines as they are now. So I'm, I'm in agreement with the staff on this one.
Other discussion? Do I hear a motion? Do you have a discussion?
Oh, I was just, yeah, I'm, it's, I mean, you know, John makes great points and, I mean, I think it does the, I like the pitch of it now and, you know, I don't want it to go down just to get 20 inches, um, you know, the slope of the lot. But again, I just, I have to go back to, to what previous commissioner said, that, you know, I just, I still feel like it's adding a two-story house onto a very small, very historic, one-story with the raised basement. So I just, and if, you know, the, the neighborhood came together to change the rules specifically to not have large, much taller additions to these historic homes, then I just feel like that's what, um, like our, our main charge is, is to do.
So do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to approve the staff guidelines.
Okay. Do I hear a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you. So the next one is 1507 Shelby Avenue?
So 1507 Shelby Avenue is a new infill that the commission previously approved in April of 2018. The photo on the left is the image of what the non-contributing house is on the site. It's still there on the site. And then on the right is the image of what the infill was approved to be. The application before you today is a request to use white brick on the infill construction. The commission's motion to approve the infill at 1507 Shelby Avenue in April of 2018 included a condition that MHCC staff must approve a brick sample before the material is purchased and installed. And that's a very, fairly typical thing that you see on almost all of your applications. So here's an image of the brick from the brick board. The brick is general shale Woodhaven Tudor. And here's another brick that the applicant, another photo of the brick that the applicant submitted. And here's a photo of the brick taking from the manufacturer's website. Although MHCC does not review the painting of brick in neighborhood conservation zoning overlays like Lockland Springs, MHCC does review new materials for new construction. The commission's policy has always been to ensure that new masonry is a historic brick color in case, even if it's eventually painted, in case that paint is ever removed. Historically, in major, in the major period of development of the Locklands, in the major period of development of the Lockland Springs neighborhood, brick was unpainted. Brick houses of the Victorian, four-square, Craftsman bungalow and Tudor revival styles were typically unpainted when they were built. Their bricks were typically earth tones like reds, reddish browns, dark oranges, tan, et cetera. Here are some images of typical historic brick. If painted currently, if you, you know, go around to the conservation overlays and historic overlays and see painted brick houses of the Tudor and Victorian and, and bungalow eras, it's most likely that these houses were painted decades after they were constructed, either to mask brick repairs or deteriorating brick, or to follow a trend where painted brick is meant to, quote, "freshen up" an older home. Historic brick and masonry have a protective and porous surface that allow moisture to wick out. Painting or sealing the brick or masonry can trap the moisture, leading to damage to the material after several freeze-thaw cycles. MHCC therefore strongly discourages the painting of historic brick. For new construction, staff has encouraged brick to remain unpainted, although MHCC does not review the painting of brick in conservation overlay. So for historic houses or new construction, we don't review it if, if a homeowner or developer decides to paint the brick. Painted brick is currently a trend in home building and home flipping, but trends like these can come and go. MHCC reviews the underlying brick for new construction to ensure that if an owner wishes to remove the paint in the future to provide for a more historically compatible material and look, the underlying brick meets MHCC standards and is similar to the historic bricks found in the district. The applicant is proposing a brick product that is already painted. MHCC staff finds that proposed painted white brick is not visually compatible with historic context and is not known what the brick underneath the paint looks like. In addition, since the color is applied at the time of manufacturing, it may not be easily, easily removed as, as an applied paint. From the sample board and the image online, the brick underneath appears to be rough and tumbled with an uneven surface, which is not typically appropriate for brick in new construction in the historic and conservation overlays. Staff recommends disapproval of the proposed white brick, finding that its color and texture do not meet Section 2B4 of the design guidelines. And so these, this is, these are photos that were provided by the applicant. They're both houses that were, are outside of our overlays. I don't, actually don't know where they are, but they're not houses that went through our review process, but they show kind of the look that the applicant is looking to get. And just so, in closing, the applicant has provided an alternate brick, an Acme red brick. This is an alternative if the white brick is not approved. This brick, which you see here on the screen, is something that the commission or the staff would happily approve as a brick for the infill. So in conclusion, staff recommends disapproval of the white brick, finding that it does not meet Section 2B4 of the design guidelines. And I believe the applicant is here. Happy to answer any questions before she speaks. If you have questions?
Thank you. Would the applicant like to speak? Please state your name and address, please.
My name is Terry Preston, 1507 Shelby Avenue. I have a prepared statement I'm going to read because I don't appear in public very often, so I'm just going to read this and. My name is Terry Preston. My daughter Aubrey has owned and lived in her 1945 bungalow for four and a half years. My daughter, together with her father and I, are in the process of demolishing her bungalow and building our future homes at the 1507 Shelby Avenue location. Back in April, April 2017, I had my first meeting with an historic preservationist during which I inquired about the rules and parameters of our build. The preservationist told me that to get an understanding of what we could build, I should go around the neighborhood and familiarize myself with the architecture, syncopation and rhythm of the homes surrounding ours. So as suggested, I went on a walkabout around our neighborhood. My takeaway from this walkabout was that the homes of our neighborhood are diverse and eclectic, which makes, which is what makes East Nashville attractive to so many. What we desired to build were two attached two-story craftsman-style homes. However, historic said the maximum height allowed would be a one and a half-story home. This made no sense to me since I know there are two-story homes in our neighborhood. So as suggested, at my first historic meeting, I went on another walkabout around our neighborhood, only this time I focused on the stories. Facts in hand, I went back to historic and was approved for a two-story home. Our architects submitted our plans and after a bit of back and forth, we were approved with a few conditions, one of which was that our front doors be at least half glass. This made no sense to me since half glass doors weren't the only style of door used in the desired historic period. So once again, I went on another walkabout around our neighborhood, only this time I focused on front doors. Of the 50-plus homes on Shelby Avenue in the immediate vicinity of ours, only seven have half glass doors. Facts in hand, I went back to historic and was approved for a three-light door. Now to the crux of today's issue. Another condition was the approval of our brick. So our builder submitted our brick of choice and it was disapproved. This makes no sense to me considering the diversity of the homes in our neighborhood. So once again, I went on my fourth walkabout around our neighborhood, only this time I focused on exterior finishes. Let me share with you the information I gathered. Out of the 50-plus homes within a two-block radius of our home, all but two of the brick homes that are either earth tone in color, that are earth tone in color, were built between 1945 and 1970. The remaining homes, the remaining homes are gray, taupe, gold, sky blue, mustard yellow, blue, yellow, green, bluish green, yellow green, gray green, mint green, gray purple, lavender and white. Three lots away on our side of Shelby are eight three-story condominiums currently under construction. Some are brick, others frame, and still others are both brick and frame on the same level. All have contemporary finishes and all have gangplank-style walkways. Just across the street from our home and only four lots away is a two-story distressed tin-clad home with a metal skillion or lean-to roof. Next to the tin-clad home are three two-story homes on stilts with metal roofs, contemporary finishes and gangplank-style walkways. Directly behind our home are two and three-story homes with flat roofs, contemporary finishes, including promenade-style balconies. Also within this two, also within this area are two two-story brick quadplexes, a one-story brick quadplex, a bike shop, a Whitestone home and a Tudor-style home with a copper roof and apps. I brought these facts to the attention of the historic preservationists and number one, I was told that contrary to what I had been told by historic from the very outset, I should not look at the homes in my neighborhood, that I should go outside of my neighborhood for insight. I don't even know what to say to that. Number two, I was told that to achieve the look I want, I could apply white paint or a whitewash mortar rub after I build the house using an earth-tone brick, even as historic concedes that neither painting nor whitewashing would be as durable as white brick. This to me doesn't make sense on any level. Number three, I was told that bottom line, the most important reason I could not use white brick is that it was not a building material that was used in the desired area. But that begs the question then, why is fiber cement siding, also known as hardy plank, and allowed building material when it wasn't invented nor developed for domestic applications until the 1980s? As to the analysis and findings of the staff recommendation, and I quote, "The commission's policy has always been to ensure that new masonry is a historic brick color in case it is ever removed, in case the paint is ever removed. To remove paint from brick is so cost prohibitive, it is not a likely option that the average Shelby homeowner can afford to undertake. And as far as I can determine, by talking to the homeowners surrounding our area, no one to date has ever done so. On top of which, according to the locals, all of the brick homes that are painted have been like that as far back as anyone can remember and they like it." Number two, the analysis further states that if the brick homes in this area are painted, and I quote, "It is likely these houses were painted decades after they were constructed and it was done to either mask brick repairs or deteriorating brick, or to follow a trend." Not only is this conjecture, conjecture as to when the houses were painted, it's also subjective and presumes to know what was in the minds of the homeowners who painted their brick. The analysis further states, quote, "Painted brick is currently in trend in home building and home flipping, but trends like these can come and go." Again, that's subjective. Let me point out some things that are, that many people boldly and quite incorrectly labeled a trend, including electricity for household use, indoor plumbing, television, cell phones, Starbucks and automobiles. Often times the word trend is applied to things others don't like or don't understand and just as often they are wrong. Let me also point out a few things that some label trendy that have come and gone and come back again numerous times in my lifetime alone. Farmhouse sinks, Edison lights, refrigerators with the freezer on the bottom, kitchen islands and barn doors, just to name a few. My guess is that many in this room have some of these elements in their home. Would you call your, would you call your choices, choices trendy or smart and good use of space? The historic staff recommends disapproval of our brick of choice citing Section 2B4 of the design guidelines, which reads, "Textures, details and material color of a new building's public facades shall be visually compatible with and similar to those of adjacent buildings or shall not contrast conspicuously." Given the facts I've shared with you, there is no way any rational person can come to the conclusion that our beautiful craftsman-style white brick home would be visually incompatible or contrast conspicuously with the homes in our neighborhood. Our home will not only be compatible with the surrounding homes, it will be a marked improvement from what was previously on that site and may encourage others to consider taking the same steps with the numerous World War II area homes surrounding ours. At the end of the day, we will have a white brick home. The question is, will we achieve it by using a more aesthetically pleasing, higher quality and durable white brick? Or will we be forced to use a less aesthetically pleasing, inferior and less durable method of paint or mortar? To summarize. As to the question of trend, the old axiom that my trash is your treasure can be applied here in that your trend is my forever. As to the question of building material, to allow the use of cement fiber, fiberboard but not allow the use of white brick is both inconsistent and arbitrary. And as to the question of compatibility and conspicuous contrast, our beautiful white craftsman-style home will not only be compatible and not conspicuously contrast with the surrounding homes, it will nicely fit right in. We are building our future homes. They are not investments to flip or rent. They will not be perpetual Airbnbs. They will be our homes and this will be our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the commissioners for the applicant? Open public hearing, are there those who wish to speak either for or against this project? Seeing none, we close public hearing. Commissioners?
I would commend the applicant for a very good research and that was a good, great presentation. Lot of different things I'd never thought of before. I'll just say though, I know we've never approved painted brick, I don't think. That's the only problem that, you know, even though it's a, I, I, that was a compelling argument, I don't think we have any kind of precedent where we've ever started that before unless I've missed out on something.
Again, I agree that that was a great presentation. You've done a lot of homework and it's obvious that you're passionate about, about your new home. That being said, if we were to vote for white brick, we'd be setting a precedent in an area that has a historic zoning overlay that, that prohibits the use of white brick. And I, I don't think that's a path I want to go down personally.
Do I hear a motion?
I motion, I make a motion to approve the staff recommendation.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion passed. Motion passes. Okay, next is 712 Benson Street.
Here at 712 Benson Street is a rear addition with a ridge raise that was approved in September of 2017. It's, they've begun construction, and actually, the exterior is nearly complete with siding, windows, and roofing installed. All of that was done before any inspections were all, were called in, and as I understand it, the first contractor's been let go, and a new contractor has been brought on. When the new contractor called in the first inspection, when, as I said, the exterior was done, it was discovered that the addition had deviated from the specifications of the permit. The ridge raise was approved to extend the front slope up, two feet up into the rear, and the addition was approved with smooth siding and with simulated divided light windows. As I said, the ridge raise was constructed taller than the plans were approved. They installed wood grain siding and grille between the glass windows. The applicant has agreed to correct the siding and windows, and they're requesting to retain the ridge raise and rear addition that was constructed taller than it had been approved. That's the front elevation, and then the side from the permit. Ridge raises have become a very common type of addition in all of the residential overlays. Many of those types of additions are approved administratively every year, but none have ever been approved to increase the height by more than two feet. In fact, there have been some where, previous cases, that have gone too tall, and the commission has compelled those to be corrected, to reduce the ridge raise down to the two feet that is the precedent. There is a view of the addition from the alley that runs alongside. Staff recommends that the ridge raise and addition be lowered to be no more than two feet higher than the historic house's ridge.
Shaun, could you explain again how this happened? There was a contractor change, or how is it that it wasn't inspected by Metro staff for a whole year after it was?
Well, we issued lots of permits, and sometimes the construction doesn't start right away, or sometimes it never starts, so we just don't have the capacity to do random inspections that, that used to be done. So now we really, you know, we rely on somebody calling to request an inspection, much like the codes department does. So when they call and ask for an inspection, that's when our inspector goes out.
Right. Was, did you say something about there were two contractors, and there was a switch at some point?
Yes, and I think the applicant would be in a better position to explain the timeline of when those things happened.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Shaun. Open public hearing, is the applicant here and would like to speak?
My name is Matthew Morgan. This is my wife, Jennifer. We are the owners of the property at 712 Benson Street. This has been our home for the last 18 years, and we began a remodeling project to add 832 square feet to this property. Loan approved in June of 2017, construction began September of 2017. We had the plans from our designer, Betsy Bergen, which were, which were reviewed by Historic and approved. The reason we're here is because the contractor, who was terminated by us in May of this year, failed to meet the conditions of the contract, and we hired Mark Fessler, who was our new contractor, to come in and complete the project. In the course of re-requesting permits under Mark's, under Mark's name, we popped back up on your radar when Fred did the inspection, and it was determined that our roof was too high and needed to be matched with the approved design, and unbeknownst to us, was done without the proper Historic permits. That's why we hired the original contractor in the first place. When we saw that the design looked different from what we had originally gotten approved, we inquired with him to that condition, and he lied to us and told us that it was all re-approved by Historic. Lie after lie after lie with him led to his eventual termination. Let's see here. We want to stress, we had no knowledge of the lack of paperwork initially from our contractor. Had we had any idea of those grievous errors, we would have contacted you immediately. We believe in doing everything by the letter of the law. This is, again, why we hired the contractor. We assumed he was doing all of that on our behalf. When we saw that the design has been altered, we had been assured that the contractor had had all those approved. We, let's see, his, his claim that the roof needed to be higher was perhaps only the only thing he told us that was right, which was that it was the only way to account for HVAC ductwork, to be able to add it into the addition at the proper code, required code for HVAC, which I believe is a 12-inch air duct. I think no less than eight for the return, 12 for the supply lines. So in order to do that without having to drop down into the ceiling, they added what was actually, it's, it was two feet over the ridge line and then an additional 10 inches. So as it stands right now, according to the specs that Mark and his team did, they went up there and they measured off that, from the two feet at the top of the ridge line, there is that additional tension, 10 inches on top, but it is enough to pinch the HVAC if it were to have to be reduced. Since this has begun with your request to alter the roof line, we've gone over the matter extensively with Mr. Fessler, about that 10 inches. We are asking for the variance, the requirement which would allow us to leave the roof as is. We ask this not because we believe we arbitrarily deserve an exception, but because of the neglected work by the original contractor, we have already had to eat the cost of about $50,000 to replace bad HVAC work, bad electrical, bad plumbing, and questionable framing that has already put us in a significant hole. Every bit of the money we have paid out has come from the existing remodel loan, which only allows for certain amounts of money for distinct and separate categories of the remodel. If we eat all this cost for fixing the roof, the last of our money will go into this effort. We would not have the funds to complete the project without some major, major efforts and assistance. If we have to reduce this down to the only two feet over the original ridge line, we could be talking, because we would have to adjust support beams, pull out plumbing, pull out electrical, you know, roof venting, all of that, we could be looking at another $50,000 to $75,000 over what we are already in the hole for, which could take the whole debt of the project beyond $100,000 over our original budget. If we, if this does happen, and we could be facing violations from the bank, we could potentially lose our home.
We understand that exceptions are rare, and we understand that you're under no obligation to give us this request. We do have a backup plan, which includes changes to the roof line, but again, it would be a cost that would be detrimental to us being able to keep our house. We understand that it would be better for us if we could have the variance, but we do have an alternate design that would allow us to lower the ridge line, and it's just not something that I don't think that we can wait until December to present this proposal to you. We just got word from the bank this morning that we have to finish the project by the end of December. Our son has been without his bedroom for over 10 months. Our son is autistic, and it's very important for him to get back in his bedroom. We ask that you give us the variance. If you can't give us the variance today, we ask that you approve the alternate design to lower the ridge line. And we have further comments, if you'd like, from Betsy, our designer, and also from Mark Fessler, our contractor. Thank you.
We hate to hear those things and regret all the troubles you've been through with your contractor and with this project. Are there others that wish to speak with regards to this project? Hearing none, I'm a closed public hearing. Commissioners?
Clarify something for me. The, the house that we looked at before, we allowed four feet above the existing house. What, what makes this different?
Well, that was an addition behind the historic house. This is a ridge raise, so it's more of an immediate pact, impact on the, on the form of the historic house, whereas the other went back ways before going up. So this is more, instead of that was an addition behind the house, this is an addition that's right on the house.
On the house, okay.
I mean, we've had some before, you know, that have come through here that, I mean, I'm explicitly thinking of the Dadoo over in Cherokee Park kind of recently that was built, you know, wrong, but I just, I mean, while I always want to stick to the guidelines, I just, I don't know. I have, I don't, I don't think I can, I don't think I can make them redo it for 10 inches. I don't know. I don't know. I'm just having a hard time with that, with, with the situation. I mean, you know, I know people will come back and say, well, this is a over-two-feet ridge raise, you know, in their presentations, when they want more space, but I don't know. I just, I, I'm going to have a hard time making them redo it. I, you know, they've agreed to change some of the siding, you know, the siding and windows. I feel like they're going to, they're working with staff and trying to get it, trying to get it to work. So that's, those are my thoughts right now.
I agree with, I'm in the same corner as Commissioner Jones on this one. In recent meetings, we have considered extenuating circumstances for making exceptions to certain guidelines, knowing that we would never approve a, a design like this on our own. Clearly, things went south on this project, and there's no way to just shave 10 inches off of, off of a building without taking, taking it completely apart. I don't feel like we would be setting a precedent for allowing this kind of thing in the future without these specific kinds of circumstances. So I'm also having a really hard time with this.
May I, may I be heard? Okay. I want to share with the board, I know that this is a compelling case, and I want to share with the board, though, that your decision has to be made based on something tied to the land and tied to the guidelines. So as, whether you decide that this is appropriate, because you have the determination to, to make as to whether it's appropriate in light of the guidelines, that's up to the board. Some people may feel that it is appropriate, some may feel that it's not appropriate, that's up to the board, but it has to be tied to the guidelines rather than tied to the individuals that are making the request. So just want to make sure that you put, whatever you decide, that the record reflects for purposes of both precedent and purposes of, if any action were to ever be brought with regard to this, that you've tied your decision directly to what, what your charge is.
Thanks, Susan. Yeah, and I guess, you know, my 10-plus years on here, I've been, there's been a lot of compelling cases. There are even people in this room who've had to tell their client had to, they've actually had to cut that off their house, and I saw it happen, and, you know, it was very, very costly for them. So I definitely, especially when it's, well, in every case, you know, it's, it's an error, and it was, it was something that the homeowner had no control over. I mean, they, there was just a, you know, bad advice for the, bad advice from a, you know, person they hired as a professional. The only thing you, that I struggle with is that, just like I said, there are, there are other cases where we've had to make the homeowner do this. Before I say that, the, the other alternate design that they brought up, which I know what is not typically, we don't look at it till you guys have looked at it, until you present it, but have you guys seen it at all?
We have, and technically, it would be an alternative that would require coming back to you, because it involves keeping that ridge raise at two feet, cutting back a little bit, and then going up another two feet. Is that right, Mr. Alexander?
Just 10 inches.
Just 10 inches. So our suggestion is, instead of trying to review that plan today, instead of making them come back in December, maybe it could be, this particular request disapproved, but then send them back to work with staff and allow staff to give them a little extra height, which normally would need to come back to you, but rather than make them.
So basically, make it where you could approve that administratively and not have to come out to us to help them with their deadline.
Right.
Go ahead, Susan.
And, and that's an alternative, and I was actually trying to think of one as well, if you're, if, because it looks like the board is really torn on, on how to deal with this. But I'm wondering, and I'll ask, ask staff, can it be, can that be a condition of the approval, so it doesn't go down as a disapproval, but it goes down as a condition?
Well, the addition's already been approved, so the request is just to raise the ridge height. So that would have to be a disapproval.
Okay, okay. Right, because you would essentially be putting a condition that is directly counter to what the specific request is on here. Okay. I was just trying to figure out a way where the board, if the board was inclined to do, do an approval, where you could do an approval as a condition, but it seems like in this instance, it won't, it won't work that way.
But we could make a disapproval with, given you the authority, the, to not have to come back to us for administrative approval. So that way, they can still make the, you know, make it work better, but not having to come all the way back to us again. I, I feel like that'll be the better way to approach it, because, you know, it, I think that, I feel better about that. Before I make a motion, do you guys have any more discussion about that? Okay. I make the motion that we approve staff recommendation and disapprove 712 Benson Street on the condition that they bring back their, with the authority given back to staff to make the approval at staff administrative level, the recommended, recommendation to become more in line with policy. Does that work?
Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
So do you need anything more in that motion? In, in regards to acceptance of, of going, of a raise if it's deemed appropriate by the staff?
Since we haven't seen it, maybe not.
I, I don't know if the question's for me or for, or for Robin, but I'll take a stab at it. I'll take a stab at it. It may be good, to the extent that staff has reviewed what is being proposed, to give a few more details in the record about what that may look like, so that it's clear as to what you've asked staff to administratively approve in the record. It may, that may be the way to go about that, and I'll defer to Robin as to whether or not she thinks that's something that you all can provide at this point.
Yeah, my only, my only caution was, we hadn't, I, we definitely hadn't seen that, and so I was trying to give you guys the complete, yeah, the flexibility and authority, because otherwise, we're really guessing, and I want to give you guys the flexibility to be able to work with the applicant and get it approved.
I have had a discussion about this option with the applicant. We, they wanted to present the, the request to keep it as it is, and in order to give, you know, that a fair shot, we didn't want to complicate the issue by putting in, you know, here's the Plan B, because then it's too easy to just automatically go to the Plan B, as, you know, seeming like a compromise. But I would describe the, in order to keep them from having to go back next month, I just, I mean, it's a pretty simple description, that they would modify the ridge raise portion of the addition that's over the existing, the historic structure to, to be lowered to two feet, but keeping with, essentially with no change to the addition that's been built taller with a brand-new footprint. So this area here, you know, that's all addition, this is all brand-new, that would remain essentially unaltered, and they would just lower the, the portion that's over the form in the historic house.
in the historic house. I've seen a couple sketches, I don't know if the applicant brought one of those along.
I don't think we need to go into details for that, but, but, Robin, does this sound like a reasonable direction with this motion that's on the floor?
Let me, if I may, Commissioner Tibbs and Commissioner Mahalson, you are the second, offer up a motion for you. Commissioner Tibbs moved to disapprove the request to change and provided staff the authority to approve additional height beyond or behind the ridge raise, which maintains the footprint and ridge raise previously approved. Does that sound right to everybody?
Sounds right to me.
Sounds right to me. Yeah.
And with that, do you, do you maintain your motion for approval in your second?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Sir, any more discussion? All in favor of the motion on the board?
Aye.
All opposed?
So you have to vote.
So I'll vote for, for the motion.
I understand that 9:25, Fatherland has requested to defer from this, this month's meeting.
So then we move out to 1208 Paris? 1208 Paris?
That Fatherland case was going to be my break, now I have three in a row. So 1208 Paris, it looks like the applicant just stepped out, but they didn't ask me not to proceed, so. This is an application to construct an addition to a historic house and to construct a detached accessory dwelling unit outbuilding. The Dadoo meets the guidelines, but in terms of scale and location, none of the materials were labeled on the drawing, so they would all need to be indicated and approved by staff before a permit could be issued, but otherwise, no issues with the outbuilding. The addition will enlarge the house on the rear and the right side of the house. It originates on the mid, around the midpoint of the right side of the building, and goes wider nine feet into the side yard, and then extends back, and it also extends from the back wall of the existing building. A rear addition is appropriate, as it usually is, and side additions are appropriate on lots wider than 60 feet, as this lot is. However, where it's appropriate to have a side addition and a rear addition, we typically, the guidelines look for those to be separate and distinct additions, a side addition and a rear addition. The reason being that an addition that just goes out the side and, and wraps around the corner requires more extensive demolition, and it also envelops portions of the two facades along with a portion of the roof, and really compromises and impacts the, the form of the historic house, and therefore is less reversible as additions go. The, here's the footprint, partial site plan. Shaded in blue is the historic house, footprint of the historic house. The addition is shaded there in yellow. So as you can see, it goes out towards the rear, and it extends up on this drawing, but extends to the right of the house, nine feet wider. On the left side, the addition is, which is the bottom there, the left, the addition is stepped in one foot from the side of the house. There's the left side and house in addition. The roof ties into the rear slope of the roof and extends back before going up to be three feet 11 inches taller than the historic house. And the guidelines allow additions to be up to four feet taller when necessary. In fact, they say addition should generally not be taller, although when there's no other option, additions can go up to four feet taller. Staff finds that the applicant didn't demonstrate that going four feet taller is necessary. For example, other options, as far as we know, haven't been considered, such as a ridge raise. Ridge raises can certainly be up to two feet tall, as we just discussed, or another roof form on the addition might allow for the same amount of usable height without going so much taller, especially looking now at the right side. So that, as you recall from the footprint, the existing house, and then in yellow, shows that the addition really is enveloping kind of the, the rear third, almost the half on the right side of the house, taking out the wall, covering up the, the roof, and he is really changing the form. And for an addition that's wider, nine feet wider and four feet taller, staff finds that the scale of that addition is not compatible with that of the historic house. There's just an image of a gambrel roof outbuilding I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation. Staff recommends approval of the Dadoo and addition with conditions that the height of the addition shall be reduced to be no more than two feet taller than the historic house, that the side and rear additions should not wrap the rear right corner of the house, and that staff shall approve the roof color and masonry selections and all Dadoo materials, and that the HVAC units are behind the midpoint of the primary building or on the rear.
Any questions about the commissioners of Sean? Thank you, Sean.
Quick, Sean, sorry, I was chewing. Have there been any, I've never seen a proposal that's, that has this wraparound feature. Is that just something y'all say from the get-go, you know, like, we don't recommend this, but, you know, maybe some people go for it anyways? I don't think I've ever come across one, but just your background on that.
Well, I mean, the, the guidelines discourage it pretty clearly. There are some circumstances where, where it could make more sense than others, but on a, and this is not a very deep lot, but it's not, it's also not a very shallow lot. So, but in typical conditions, you know, it might be appropriate to have a side addition and a rear addition, but like I said, when you, you know, you can see there kitchen in the floor plan, not that we're reviewing the interior, but, you know, that really isn't just an addition on the side, that's kind of reworking a whole corner of the house, and, you know, it, it changes the form more, more substantially. It's, I'll go to the picture of the side of the house, especially on a one-story house, you know, you could remember from that side elevation, it's really covering up a big portion of this. I think I even outlined it in the staff recommendation that, that got sent out to you, that, you know, which, it kind of takes up the, the back right corner of the house. On a two-story house with a one-story addition that wraps the corner, might be less noticeable, because it would keep the eaves intact, to keep the second-story wall intact. But here, just kind of, on a house like this, wrapping the corner just blows out the whole back corner of the house.
Thank you, Sean.
The applicants have returned, if you have any questions.
Would you just, I missed, when you discussed the height, proposed height of the addition, it's, the proposed design is less than four feet, but you're recommending two, though four feet is allowed? Am I mistaken? How am I, how am I misunderstanding?
Let me find the, the exact word. So the way it's written in the design guidelines is, whenever a tall, whenever possible, addition should not be taller than the historic building. However, when a taller addition is the only option, additions to single-story structures may rise as, rise as high as four feet above the shadow line of the existing building at a distance 40 feet from the front edge of the existing building. In this instance, the sidewalls and roof of the addition must set in as is typical for all additions.
Thank you.
So, sort of hinges on that, whenever possible, addition should not be taller in a situation where other addition forms, like a ridge raise, might alleviate the need to go so much taller.
And since this is a, I'm assuming, a level lot, that's special consideration for?
It's fairly level, yes.
Right.
Thank you, Sean. Open public hearing, is the, would the applicant like to speak? If you'll, please state your name and address.
Yes, sir, Duane Cuthbertson, 2814 South, 12th Avenue South. First off, I want to thank Sean for the communication he's provided us, working out a design for additions to this property. We felt like we worked with the architect pretty diligently to come up with a practical addition that we felt met the guidelines, and we had a lot of communication with Sean, and we feel like what we've got in front of you meets most of those guidelines, but on those two points that he put out in front of you. So we're proposing effectively a one-story side addition, and then a one-and-a-half-story rear addition to that existing house. Our intent is to gain practical living area on the existing house. With the additions, we're still only at a modest 3,200 square feet, and by 12 South standards, I feel like that's fairly modest. We're also adding a two-story detached accessory building. It's a garage with an accessory dwelling unit above it. So two points that we're asking the commission to approve on our design, we are asking for a raised ridge height of four feet. Our existing house is approximately 20 feet in height, it's one-and-a-half stories and 20 feet. That's not a lot of feet to squeeze one-and-a-half stories into. In fact, our second story in the existing house only has a floor-to-ceiling height of seven-and-a-half feet. While technically, it's still a second floor, it's, it's pretty impractical for most of us, but it still counts. So we're asking for a ridge raise of 24 feet to essentially enable some practical floor-to-ceiling heights between the first floor and the second floor at its, at its peak. Again, same time, we're keeping it at one-and-a-half stories. So along the side, where we are, where we are bumping out to be consistent with the side addition, effectively, we'll, we'll be at one story on that side of the house. The majority of the massing is placed in the center of the layout, as you can see here. It really mitigates the impact that that raised ridge height has from the, from the street. It's, we also feel like this raised ridge height is fairly consistent with those found in the surrounding neighborhood. We've got a house to our right that's at 27 feet, and then the two houses to our left are at 28 feet and 27 feet. We feel like we've explored, we explored a lot of options with staff, and we feel like this, this outcome is the most practical solution, that again, mitigates impact, but gives us practical use of one-and-a-half stories in the addition. So the second point that we're asking the commission to weigh in on is allowing us some structural continuation, architectural continuation between our rear and side additions. Our request to use, essentially to enable practical and functional layout, a practical and functional layout between the existing structure and the additions. We're also looking to limit the, the depth of the rear addition and provide as much yard space between our addition and the detached building in the rear. So we feel like, we feel like we explored the design guidelines, and our understanding is that the intent of exposing the original corner is to preserve the integrity of that original structure, and we'd submit to you that it's not the original corner, it was an inset porch at some point in its history, and it's been enclosed, and we feel like that enclosure, that full enclosure has kind of compromised the integrity of the original structure. We've expressed that we're willing to work with staff to provide that usual inset that you see between the depth of the original house and rear additions, one-foot inset, to provide some distinction, but we're asking for that continuation also for, for functional purposes in this layout. Because the house is one-and-a-half stories and 20 feet, it, it's very, it's hard to provide a full set of stairs to that second floor and allow it to, the second floor to, to move to the rear addition. So we're, we're looking to place our stairs in that transition area, right behind the original house. That's exactly where that, that inset would be located. If we have to provide that inset, then we effectively have to push the entire rear addition back into the, to the rear yard, and that would put this addition, this rear addition, really close to our detached building, basically eliminating any practical rear yard back there. So one thing that we also did when we, when we looked, when we looked to design this layout is we looked at the surrounding neighborhood for guidance, and we found no less than four houses in the immediate vicinity that have essentially wraparound additions. They have side additions and rear additions that effectively wrap around that side corner, and these are all additions that we think were approved by the commission, and what we're asking for is pretty consistent with, with those outcomes. Like I said, we're, we're willing to work with staff on providing some distinction between the original house depth and the rear addition, and, you know, we're asking for you to approve these amendments or modifications. It helps us keep the, the scale of the house modest, and it allows us to provide a practical and functional layout between the existing house and the additions, while still maintaining reasonable and usable rear yards.
Thank you, Mr. Cuthbertson. Any questions for the applicant?
He's, you're part of that.
I am.
Oh, okay.
That's all I got.
Please state your name and address.
Sure. Does the clock start from here, or is that?
Yeah.
Right, okay. William Smallman, 1512 Paris Avenue, actually live on the street. I have a couple examples, the three houses on our street that have been approved by the commission in the last few years all have wraparounds just like this. There haven't been any that have actually come through the commission and been approved without it. I think there was one that was done administratively, that had an inset, but it didn't have a back porch like ours do in these other three, and I think that's kind of important to have, and I will pass these around. There's only one copy of each, but just, you can see the footprint, and all of them had porches that were added or enclosed, just like this one. So I think I worked very hard on this plan to try to use the guidelines and follow the precedent of what has been set on our street, and I believe we did a really good job coming in. I know the, the inset is kind of a tricky one, because it's hard to determine what is an addition. In most circumstances in the guidelines, enclosing a porch is an addition. This time, it's debatable, I guess, whether it's an addition or not. To me, if there's no walls to something, and I'm not sure what we're preserving in the first place, if we're trying to preserve a corner, there is no corner. We can say we're preserving the eve, but on all three of these, there were eaves that could have been preserved, and none of them got preserved. So it's not about preserving the eve, there is no corner, we're saving a block of foundation that's all that's visible on this one. So it's really hard for me to figure out the point of a 10-foot inset, you know, go in 10 feet, back four, and then back out 10. And we talked quite a bit with staff over this, and the, it's kind of a pros and cons. If we preserve that corner, it ends up affecting our second-floor dormer, pushes the addition back about six feet into the already shallow lot, and it makes the addition too close to the Dadoo to fit the guidelines, even at a reduced 10 feet. So it's this cumulative effect of what happens as we try to accomplish one thing that's only visible when you stand right next to it. From the street, we're able to do, create the visibility by doing a one-foot inset, which is more than the other three did, there were zero inset on all three of those. So I think just by even attempting to show a visual of it goes quite a way. We also submitted an updated plan to staff, it was after Sean had finished the report, but we have redone the roofline of the side addition to follow the same form of the existing roofline on the back, to create the look of keeping the eve in place, even though it's not going to be. So from the street, it will look very much like it's been intact, and it will still have an inset that's visible from the street. So I think the, the form of this has accomplished what, the intent of what neighbors want, to where it looks like it's an addition off the rear. The only way to tell any different is to stand right next to it and kind of creep into someone's yard to find out. That, and, let's see.
That, and, let's see. Yeah, I think that's it. We just, I think we did a great job working with staff. I know you guys can't look at the last plan, but we went over many versions of it to get to this point. Last thing on the height, we did talk about that, and I feel like it is the only option. We've tried the idea of reducing it. The only way to accomplish reducing it is to do multiple heat and air units upstairs, because we can't do ductwork, and we would have a lower-than-eight-foot ceiling if we do it. So that's that. Thank you very much.
Are there others that wish to speak for or against this project? Hearing known, we'll close public hearing. Commissioners, comments?
Just to kind of get a conversation, those wraps, can you guys, do we have any other, those were not the best examples, I guess. Do we have any other wraps that we could?
It is, I think that the first one, 1211, it doesn't appear to wrap the rear corner to me on the drawings provided. I looked up 1504, and obviously I can't read the whole report in a few seconds, but it sounds like there was a reason for that one, that there was, it had already been altered on that rear corner, and an addition had already been back there. I imagine that's the same for 1208. This one having an enclosed porch, we didn't see as much of an alteration, because that corner would still have been defined by that porch post. It was just enclosed. Does that help?
It does mean, yeah.
Yeah, that's, I was looking them up as well, but yeah, 1504, the Robin was just talking to, what she said, and then in addition, it was, they pointed out that the lot was shallow. So, I mean, you know, just for, you know, I hate, I don't want applicants feeling like they're getting different things. You know, of course, we don't deal with staff on the level, we only get them at commission, so, but, you know, in these instances, you know, every time you comment, it's a different So, you know, we try to stick with the guidelines. So, you know, in this, in my, you know, the need, or the want, not the need, the want for a specific homeowner to have X amount of space that that homeowner wants to have, to me, is null and void. It's about the home, and you have a small home, you can't have everything you want in some instances, so that's my opinion on it. I agree with staff.
We've had a lot of ridge height requests, and I definitely sympathize with it. That is not always easy to get that, you know, the, I won't say usable space, but quality space, I'm saying for, the quality that they're looking for, but, you know, as, if they've been here the whole day, we've been struggling with this for every case, I think, so it's, unless we can really come up with, and you guys may have something, a really, real, you know, something that's on the guidelines, while we could allow it, I don't really see where this case is proven at, but definitely sympathize with all of them.
I agree with both of you, and one thing that applicants have done today, twice now at least, is to cite examples in the surrounding neighborhood where we don't necessarily know when those additions were put on and/or how they were done before or after guidelines were in place, and our charge is to uphold what's in front of us currently. And neighborhood context doesn't help very much all the time. And I also agree with staff, and I think that you could get a lot of what you need on the second-floor interior headspace by exploring a ridge raise, which is routinely So that's where I am.
All that being said, I make a motion to adopt the staff guidelines for 1208 Paris Avenue.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is it possible to look at the dada as well? I don't think that's been discussed. We had talked about having that approved on it.
Oh, that was recommended for approval in the recommendation.
So we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
And I think the motion was to approve staff guidelines, but I think the record rule reflect that it's to approve staff recommendation, just to be, to be clear.
Okay. Next, we have 3925 Cambridge Street.
3925 Cambridge Street, just making sure. This is an application to construct a side and rear addition. It actually wraps the corner, and this addition will require a rear setback determination. There is an overhead view of the lot. This lot and the one to the left, sort of at some point in history, bought and split a lot that was between them, so this lot is one-and-a-half times the average width. It's an 80-foot wide lot. It's also considerably shallower than your typical lot. It's about 100, 105-foot average depth of side yard, side property line depth, and there's no alley at the rear. Perhaps unlike the other one, this one, those unusual lot circumstances, the shallowness of the lot and the width of the lot, it might justify an addition that does wrap the corner. But in doing that, special care must be taken to ensure that the scale and setbacks of the addition are appropriate to preserve, for the addition to be subordinate and maintain the historic form. The proposed addition will originate on the left side of the house, roughly two-thirds of the way back from the front, and extend out to the left 34 feet beyond the edge of a side porch there. The side addition, I'll show you the site plan. There's the existing site plan, and then the proposed. So it originates on the left side, two-thirds of the way back from the front, and goes out to the left 34 feet, where it then actually steps forward. The forward projection comes up a third of the house, so that that front wall of the addition is at about the one-third line, 12 feet back from the front of the house. This component that's on the left, the dominant feature of that facade or of that elevation is a garage. The garage component itself is 23 feet wide, and as I said, it's just 12 feet back from the front face of the house. That bottom image there is the side elevation showing that the garage component extends back 49 feet, encroaching 15 feet into the standard 25-foot setback requirement. The commission does have authority to determine when a setback greater or less than the standard setback would be more appropriate based on historic context. And in this situation, this, go back to the overhead, you can see that this side of Cambridge Avenue backs up to Aberdeen Road. Aberdeen Road has similar conditions, similar lot sizes, and one could imagine if a five-foot rear setback is approved here, similar conditions being the case on Aberdeen, five-foot setbacks might be approved on Aberdeen, would result in 10 feet between buildings on these two streets. The lot is shallow, and it is wide, and there is no alley, so front-facing garages are common, and you can see a few there in the overhead, but they're generally at the rear of the lot, typically behind the mass of the house, the historic house in front, in some cases behind the entirety of the structure, certainly back behind the midpoint. And in no instance do you see a garage element that's so far forward on the historic house. The rear and right-side elevations, there's the, the blue shading is the historic house. There's actually an existing rear addition that's being demolished, which again is perhaps an argument for some of the addition wrapping the corner. But you can see after the stepping out to the left, the garage component steps forward. Staff finds that the massing and the front setback of that addition, which is essentially appears, you know, as I said, the dominant feature is a garage, that feature so far forward, nearly equaling the depth or the width of the house, only sitting 12 feet back, is not appropriate. Staff recommends disapproval of the proposed addition to 3925 Cambridge Avenue, finding that it does not meet Section 2B1B scale and 2B1C setbacks for the design guidelines for additions in the Cherokee Park Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay. I can answer any questions, or try to, and the applicant is here as well. I'll mention, we received two letters of support in support of this application. Those were forwarded to you before the meeting.
Any questions for Sean? Thank you, Sean. Open public hearing, would the applicant like to speak?
It's on, right? Okay. I'm Van Pond, 2929 Sidco Drive, Nashville. I'm the architect. My clients, William Bush and Kayla Torres, are here in the back. Will's owned the property for 15 years. He bought it from his great aunt, so this is kind of an unusual, unusual ownership pattern that it actually stayed in the family, from what we, what I'm usually bringing up to you, you all. So I wanted to thank staff for their input as we've gone through this process. Obviously, a very interesting lot, being so shallow, but oddly typical in that one stretch of Cambridge and Aberdeen. We reviewed the staff's comments, and we would like for you to consider approval of the proposed design. Couple of things to talk about that are Sean's kind of brief presentation of the staff recommendation that you all have seen. There's really two pieces that we're asking for, for your consideration on, and that's the rear yard setback determination is one key piece. As you saw, Sean, can you pull that overhead view of the other properties up? As you saw, there's kind of a pattern of development between Aberdeen, kind of the north of this slide, and Cambridge to the south, that there are outbuildings of scale in very close proximity to their main structures. What we're proposing, as far as requesting more than the typical 10-foot setback reduction, is a 14-foot wide portion of this particular property. You can get a site plan for me. So that one projection at the north of the slide, that is 14 feet wide, it is where we're asking for the five-foot setback. The remainder of the addition, if we struck a 10-foot setback from that, which again, kind of in your staff reports, staff has recommended approval of these in the past at 10 feet, the remainder of the addition either sits with inside that, and that is a 22, 23-foot width, or it's completely within the 20-foot required setback. We're asking for this because of the shallowness of the lot, 105 feet average depth. The lots across the street are completely the opposite. They're 200 feet in depth. As I found out mid-year last year, there's also a 20-foot stormwater easement across the middle of those lots, which changes their dynamics. So this is a little bit of an odd street, kind of coming up against the old railroad tracks, being subdivided and kind of almost city beautiful with kind of the curving boulevards going through. So we would like to ask your consideration for that five-foot, very small portion of the addition reduced setback. The other piece is the forward projecting portion of the proposal with the garage. Because of the shallowness of the lot, trying to put a garage on this property becomes challenging. If we talked with staff about it to, let's just do a detached garage at the back corner, well, at that point, there's no, there's nothing else left. So what we've proposed here is a garage that while it does come further forward than the halfway point of the house, it does sit behind the existing datum line of the back of the original porch. The connecting, yeah, the site plan, yeah. The other thing we've done is we've placed the more, larger scale of the addition behind that two-thirds point to give relief and let this look a little bit more like a separate structure, so it's not kind of one big house happening. That is one piece of the graphic presentation of this. The elevations are a little deceiving. It's not one 49-foot slab of house being attached to this. It's a 24-foot piece and a hyphen that does kind of conform to the intent of the guidelines. That is what we'd like your consideration on. Of course, we've been talking with staff, and part of my job is for my clients to see what they need and see what is tenable, and I would appreciate your consideration and glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Van. Any other comments from the applicant? Are there others who wish to speak for or against this project? Hearing known, we close public hearing. Discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I commend the thought, you know, that was given to this, you know, pretty modest home with regard to, you know, stepping, stepping it back and making sure it looks different. I guess I'm just still concerned with just the basic size of the addition. I'm trying to just go through all these photos and everything, and, you know, I was reading it earlier, and I just can't, it's just a very small home. Again, and, you know, a setback determination of 15 feet difference than, you know, and I know we do that a lot, but five feet in the very back is just seems very close, and so that's kind of what I'm thinking at the moment. But I mean, you know, the general feel of it, you know, and I agree, the wraparound in this instance, I'm okay with because of the size of the lot, and that, you know, they're already coming with something else, or they had a previous addition, so, but so that's not a problem for me. I like where it is, and that's kind of the only place it can be. It's just the general size and the width of it being so close to the front of the house.
I do like, I like how they pulled this off for the most part. I'm actually okay with the back, it's a little bit. The garage up closer is probably my, you know, main concern, I guess, as far as where it pulls up. I think the way this wrap is done is more in line with how, you know, because of the site, because of the way the existing home is, how it's, how it relates to it's a little bit different. The garage is, I guess, my only, my only concern is about how far up it is. I was trying to think of some, like, you know, I love it if it was maybe there, if you could kind of work with it some. There is a porch, I guess, in between there that does give the break. I guess that's why it's a little less offensive to me.
It will remind us as commissioners that, you know, as much as we like designs and that really our charge is to comply with the guidelines that the neighborhood and the council have adopted, so that's really our guideline on all these. Commissioner Price, do you have comments?
I have some other concerns, but I'm generally agree with the gentleman. The gentleman, she's over Lil' House. Maybe it's something that, if not historically, been there and looking at their views of the property. It's kind of... at aerial views of the property, it's going to result in a much longer housing. Anyway, it doesn't look like it would be happening.
So, is all, is any other comments?
Want to make a motion?
I make a motion to adopt the staff recommendations for 3925 Cambridge Street.
So, we have a motion for second?
Second.
All in favor?
All opposed.
Motion carries. Next is 2108 11th Avenue South.
2108 11th Avenue South was constructed circa 1928 and contributes to the historic character of the Waverly Belmont Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay. The porch columns and historic wood siding have been replaced or covered up over the years, but the house's form is still clearly that of a late 1920s frame house. The lot slopes significantly from the front to the back, allowing for basement level that can be occupied with living space. The lot is zoned for two residential units. The house is fairly small, at about 944 square feet in footprint. By comparison, the lot is over 11,000 square feet. The applicant is proposing a rear addition to create a second residential unit. The addition meets all basement zoning setbacks. It does not extend wider than the historic house on the right side, which staff finds, I'm sorry, it does extend wider on the right side, which staff finds could be appropriate since the lot is over 60 feet wide and the house is fairly small. However, in general, finds, staff finds that the footprint of the addition is too large for this historic house. In this image, the green portion is the historic house and the yellow portion is the addition. The design guidelines state, and I will note here that this is part of the design guidelines, it's not part of the italicized text, this is the design guidelines. It states, "No matter its use, an addition should not be larger than the existing house, not including nonhistoric additions, in order to achieve compatibility and scale. This will allow for the retention of small and medium-sized homes in the neighborhood. The diversity of housing type and size is a character-defining feature of historic districts." In the past, MHCC has interpreted this section of the design guidelines to mean that the addition should not more than double the footprint of the house, among other things, but that's one of the things we've, one of our typical requirements is that an addition should not more than double the footprint of the house. In other words, the footprint of the addition should not be larger than the footprint of the historic house. In this case, the proposed footprint is more than three times that of the historic house and would quadruple the footprint of the existing house. The historic house has a footprint of 944 square feet, including the front porch. The proposed addition will have a footprint of approximately 2,800 square feet, including the rear porch. In total, the addition would increase the size of the house from about 944 square feet to 3,744 square feet. Staff does appreciate that the applicant has designed the addition so that it is no taller than the historic house. Because of the slope of the lot, the addition gains a basement level that can be used for living space. The left property line borders a side alley, and the applicant proposes a basement-level garage accessed via the alley. As I mentioned earlier, the addition will create a second residential unit, and this unit will face, so the, the main door facing 11th Avenue South will remain, and a secondary entrance will be added to the side and to the rear. Just a little bit of background, typically when there's a historic house on a typical lot, staff says, you know, you can't build a house behind a house. The commission has not approved houses behind houses on typical lots in the past. We say if you want to create a second residential unit, you do have the option of building an addition to the house, so long as that meets the design guidelines, whether or not the house is used as one unit or two units. Since the commission doesn't review use or number of units, that's kind of how we've treated people who want to create an HPR or create an addition, or create two residential units that they can sell on a lot with a historic house. But again, in this case, staff finds that the overall scale of the proposed addition is just too large for the historic house. So, it's not the fact that it's being used as a duplex that we have an issue with, it's the fact that the addition is just overwhelming the historic house. And again, you can see in the green, the historic house versus the part that's the So, in this case, staff found that because the house is so small, it's just under 1,000 square feet, and the lot is so large at over 11,000 square feet, there's a possibility that we could, you know, make, not make an exception, but could allow an addition that's maybe slightly larger than the existing house. But in this case, this is just way too, staff finds that this is just way too big, that it's kind of overwhelming the historic house. Here's the left elevation. Here's the rear elevation. Here's the roof plan in a 3D drawing. Although the gables like this, that the ones proposed are typically appropriate, staff finds that the multiple gable roof forms tied together to create a long addition are not compatible with the simple side gable of the historic house. And here are more renderings provided by the applicant. Here's a drawing showing the height of the house, the existing house compared to the height and scale of the house next door. The house next door was constructed prior to the establishment of the overlay, so it did not go through the commission's process. So, there are taller houses nearby, but they are largely new construction built before the creation of the conservation zoning overlay. For additions, MHCC is tasked with comparing the size of the addition to the historic house, not with the comparing, not with comparing the size of the addition to the neighboring context. In this case, the addition's footprint, depth, and scale are just too large when compared with the historic house. This is an aerial provided by the applicant. You can see that the house is in question is with the red arrow. I think this is to show that there is large construction nearby, but if you look at the boundaries of the historic district, kind of where the house is is within the conservation overlay, but the large-scale, you know, two, two houses per lot development is actually outside of the historic overlay. And if you kind of go to, a little bit to the left of where that other image was taken, you can see that to the left, kind of in the heart of the Waverly Belmont Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay, there are some other smaller-scale, one and a half-story houses, one-story houses that are contributing and that are really part of the character of the neighborhood. So, in summary, with, with historic houses, MHCC is tasked with ensuring that the size and scale of the addition is appropriate to the historic house. The neighborhood context is less important with additions because we're looking to see how the addition relates to the historic house, not necessarily to the surrounding context. The design guidelines state, quote, "No matter its use, an addition should not be larger than the existing house." Staff therefore finds that this addition is too large and does not meet the design guidelines, and staff recommends disapproval of the addition, finding that its scale and roof form did not meet sections 3B and 4B of the design guidelines. And I believe the owner and the architect are here, but I'm happy to answer any questions before they come up.
Thank you, Melissa. Any questions? Melissa? Thank you. Open public hearing. Would the applicant like to speak? Please state your name and address.
Commissioner, I'm Jeff Reed. I'm the owner of this property, and appreciate you guys hearing us this afternoon. I've got some additional photos of the house. I don't know if you have a chance to look at those or not. Is that appropriate? Can we distribute those?
I, you all copies?
Yeah.
I'll do that, yes. Thank you for hearing us today. This, the house we have here at 2108, 2108 11th is an extraordinarily small house. The square footage inside is 780 square feet. So, it's the, it's the smallest house on the street, one of the smallest houses, if not the smallest house in the neighborhood. The footprint of the house is 944 square feet with the porches. We add the porches to it, but the interior square footage is 780 square feet. It is literally 30 foot wide and 31 foot deep. This is, this house is smaller than what a day-to would be allowed on this lot. As a lot, which is this lot, is 11,000 square feet. So, with that square footage of a lot, you would allow a thousand-square-foot footprint of a day-to on this lot. This house is smaller than a day-to. So, it presents some unique hardships with respect to trying to develop the property. And I understand you have guidelines that say generally the square footage should not be double the existing square footage, but in this case, there's no minimum floor of that in existing guidelines. So, I don't think the guidelines really contemplate dealing with houses of this size, of this small size. If you literally apply the guidelines and you have a 500-square-foot house, you can only have, and you double it, you've got only a thousand-square-foot house, which is not marketable in today's world. So, what, when this thing first, when we got this property, it had been in an estate for many years. The lady who owned the house had been in a nursing home for many years. She passed away. I bought it, I'm the neighbor next door. I own 2110 11th Avenue South next to it. You see the white house in the materials I've handed you. I built the white house next to this. So, this house is literally right next to 2110 11th, next to it. So, when I bought this house, I bought it with the idea of preserving the neighborhood, improving, improving the neighborhood, having a nicer, nicer home, because that house really has been an eyesore to the neighborhood for a long time. It hasn't been maintained. It's a small house. It would not even meet the guidelines today for your historic overlay. It has aluminum siding on the side of it. It has a wrought iron front porch. The window casings do not meet your guidelines. It has HVAC conditioners hanging out the windows. So, it has center block walls in the back. So, so if someone tried to rebuild, recreate this house today, the existing house would not meet your guidelines today that you have for this overlay. But when we talked to the staff about this, they did think this house was contributing. So, when that happened, I went ahead and hired an architect to come in and say, well, if we need to save this house, what can we develop, what kind of plans can we develop to save this house in an economically feasible way? And that's when Mitchell Hodge was hired, and he will be speaking to you shortly. And he developed this plan, which puts basically, this is R8 zoning on this property, and it puts two 2,600-square-foot homes on this lot. So, so we're going from a house which is 780 square feet to two very average, three-bedroom, three-bath homes of 2,600 square feet that would be suitable for families next, for the neighborhood here. This house is two blocks from Waverly Belmont School. It's a perfect house for people to have their kids be able to walk to school to, and it's just a good, it would be a good family-type setting for families to live within that closer proximity to the school. So, he developed the two houses, which are 2,600 square feet each. We, we think are very modest houses, and when he did that, he did that in a manner, because I said, I think it's going to be important for historic to preserve the front elevation of the house. So, when you look at it, it will look, from the sidewalk, it will look virtually the same as it does today after remodeling is done. So, he did that and built the addition behind the existing house. He inset it appropriately, as you've heard from staff. The staff found that to be appropriate. He also did not raise the roof line above the existing house. He kept the roof line below the existing house, so you can't see the roof line behind it. So, it's kind of a low-sitting house for the duration of the length of the lot, and he kept the spacing of the existing house with regard to the addition. So, you've heard the staff say that other than the size with respect to this house, this really meets most of the other criteria of the, of the overlay. The issue with the roof is just really a product of the size of the house, which they're objecting to. But to make this, to put this house or this property in marketable condition, you have to have so many square feet footage to actually pay for the renovation of this house, to be able to keep it, and basically put it in marketable condition, because someone will want, you need to have a kitchen, a living room, den, and bedrooms and baths with a house. And 2,600 square foot, we think is very modest with respect to these two additions that he's proposing. It's very consistent with respect to the neighborhood. The neighborhood have houses stretching all the way to the very back of the, the setback line with respect to many of these properties. This one, his, his design that he's come up with leaves 50 feet in a rear lot from the back alley. This house has a side alley and a rear alley. So, even with this addition, you still have 50 feet behind this addition in the back, and you really have a nice-sized backyard to the rear alley. So, we think it's the most we can do with the house we have. We have very limited constraints with what we can do with a 780-square-foot house, and we're trying to come up with something we think is plausible and feasible economically. Now, I'll turn this over to Mr. Hodge, because our time's limited.
Thank you, Mr. Reed.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Mitch Hodge, 1900 Cedar Lane. Jeff, when Jeff had come to me, he'd already had several meetings with historic staff where they've determined that the house is contributing. Surprising, it's, it's the smallest house on the, on the block there. And I guess I need to emphasize this project, we're trying to preserve, we're working with that, we're trying to preserve that house as it is. What you see on the, could you show that existing front? You know, what, what you'll see there is what you'll see in the end, the end result. New and improved, it'll have the brick columns put back in, the wood, the wood siding. We have no idea what condition the siding is, but, but that is what you'll see. You'll notice there are some very tall boxwoods on each side. That's what you see from the street. The side slopes towards the back, so we've created, the challenge of this house, it's so simple, it really doesn't have a style, was trying to create something to provide a mechanism to save this house. Again, we come up, we have the square footage, you know, the solution was to kind of replicate that and create a rhythm along the side there. We've done this, you know, the insets between the gables to where it kind of appears to be rows of, you know, similar volume structures to achieve that. If you look at the aerial photo, you'll see, I mean, you know, we're referring to historic context, but that photo, there's 30, there's, we have a photo in our presentation, there's 40 houses on that street there. 32 of them are new houses. There's only eight houses, including this one, that are actually older homes there. This is the smallest of that house, and it's on probably the largest lot in there. So, we're, you know, these, these are putting some harsh restrictions on the property there. Jeff had bought the property knowing that it was zoned to family, two-family houses anywhere could be detached, and they're not limited. What we have here is that the zoning allows for two-family detached, but within the historic overlay, we have to keep them together as well as the limit on the size. So, what we're constrained with is coming up with two houses that aren't even 1,000 square feet, and to me, that's, obviously, that's not even a marketable house in, you know, in any, any way there. So, again, we're trying to accommodate saving the existing house with the design that comple, you know, that complements it and achieve the, the goals. Otherwise, we're kind of frankly stuck in the mud there. I'm open to questions at this point? Do you have?
Any questions for the applicant? No, thank you, Mitch. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this project? Hearing known, we'll close public hearing. Commissioners, discussion?
While, you know, I commend keeping the form, you know, low and behind the house. I mean, this one's, it's just a non-starter for me. It is, I mean, I feel like this might be my tagline, but you got a small house. Being a small house isn't a hardship. Those are, most historic homes were smaller. You know, the fact, you know, we, that's, that's why we're here. You know, additions, modifications are allowed to work with it, but again, you know, not everyone gets the huge new house that they want in these historic districts. That's just kind of the nature of the game, and like the report said, or she said in the presentation, you know, having a mixture of home sizes in an area is healthy for that area, you know. So, for me, that, I completely agree with the staff recommendation, and I just think the addition is, is far too large.
I agree with Caitlin, but I do have to say I appreciate the sensitivity to the roof line. I mean, that maybe is just today, but I really appreciate the attempt to try to make it comparable. That was, that was, that was, you know, it was an admirable shot, but I kind of, I agree with Caitlin, it just got too big, I think. Totally, I mean, understanding the width, I mean, the lot size, but it just, it just got too big for it, I think. I may even had some leverage for maybe, maybe a little bit less, you know, but in this, I agree with staff recommendation.
Well, hearing what I'm hearing, I'll just defer it, and we'll go back with staff and talk with them.
Okay. If the applicant defers, so.
Yes, thank you.
So, is there a motion to accept applicant's defer, request for deferral?
Accepted.
Second?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Go ahead.
Thank you.
1511 Ashwood Avenue.
All right. The house at 1511 Ashwood Avenue is a brick bungalow that contributes to the historic character of the Belmont Hillsborough overlay. This application is to construct a ridge raise and rear addition to the historic house. And the plan also includes changes to the window and door openings on the front facade, which have significantly altered over time. So the top-left photo here is the existing front facade, and then the proposed plan is to the right. And then, just for your reference, the photo below is the property assessor's photo from 1967. So with regard to changes to the front openings, the applicant proposes to construct the windows similar to those seen on the property assessor's photo. The front door will be relocated to the center and include a single side light to the left of the door with a transom above. The 1967 photo shows an off-center door with no side lights and a single window to the left of the door. Staff finds that it's likely that the front facade had already been altered by the time this, this photo had been taken in 67, since such a configuration is not typically seen historically. In addition, the panels below the windows, which is seen on the left window, and the window boxes seen on the right, are more typical of a later minimal traditional style. So these, these elements were likely added to convert doors to windows. So for this reason, staff finds that the front door with side lights and transom could be appropriate. Staff would recommend that, that instead of an asymmetrical design, that a more symmetrical design be proposed, since that is what was more likely seen on a historic house. And the applicant has, has agreed to this condition and already submitted revisions reflecting that change. The applicant also proposes to remove the existing exterior stair on the left-side facade and replace the door with a window. Staff finds that this is appropriate, as the sandmore maps do not indicate that this, this house was historically a duplex. The new construction includes a ridge raise that will increase the height of the roof by two feet and meet the design guidelines with the insets. The rear addition does not more than double the footprint or depth of the house and is inset two feet from both rear corners before it goes back four feet and then comes back out to match the width of the house. So both side facades includes two-story pieces on the rear addition, where both the first and second stories match the width of the house. So while, and these arrows kind of indicate that, while it may be appropriate for one, a one-story addition, if separated by an alcove to match the width of the historic house, staff finds that the scale of the proposed addition is not appropriate, because the roof and eve height are taller, making the form of the addition appear larger and to have a greater number of stories than the historic house. So to help illustrate the arrows that you see on both, both side facades, here show the half-story of the existing house and the two-story portion of the addition. So as proposed, both of those elements will, will line up with regard to the width. All right. So this slide shows the right-side elevation and the second floor plan, where you can again see that those elements line up. The commission has required a two-foot inset for two-story additions for many years for three reasons. First, to distinguish between the old and the new. Second, to, to make the addition more easily removable if the original configuration were to be desired to be reconstructed at some point in the future. And three, to help hide additions behind historic homes. The commission has also routinely allowed for additions to step back out after a two-foot inset to meet the original width of the walls of the house. However, when that addition is two stories and, and it's allowed to step back out behind a one- or one-and-a-half-story home, the reason for the two-foot inset is no longer met. So while the ridge raise and first-story insets of the addition are appropriate, staff finds that the scale of the upper story is not subordinate to the original house. Staff would recommend that either the full width of the addition maintain a two-foot inset, or at the very least, that the, the upper story portion be reduced to set in two feet inside the silhouette of the historic house. And with that condition, staff finds that the addition would meet sections 2B-1A and 2B-1B of the design guidelines. So subsequent revised, revised plans indicate that the materials of the addition will be a parched concrete foundation, lap siding, and wood shingle siding for the cladding, shingle roofing to match the existing house, and a brick chimney on the rear facade, which we see here. So staff finds that these are common and appropriate materials for an addition, and staff would ask to approve the window and door selections prior to installation, as well as a brick sample. So while the ridge raise and first-story insets are appropriate, staff finds that the scale of the upper story is not subordinate to the original house, and would recommend approval with the following conditions, and, and a couple have changed since revised plans have been submitted. So number one has been removed. They've submitted a revision that met that condition. Number two, the width of at least the upper story, if not the entire additions, shall be reduced to set two feet within the silhouette of the historic house. And then, three, staff shall review, review and approve all materials, not all materials, the materials of the windows, doors, and masonry prior to purchase and installation. And number four, if relocated, the HVAC shall be located behind the house or on either side beyond the midpoint of the house. So with these conditions, staff finds that the addition can meet the design guidelines for the Belmont Hillsborough neighborhood. Any questions?
Thank you, Melissa. Any questions? Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Open public hearing, is the applicant here to, would like to speak? Please state your name and address.
Alex Shurling, and this is my primary residence, 1511. I've got a couple of photos that I'd like to share as well, just kind of as I talk. And I believe I'll. The first thing I want to say is, I've lived in this neighborhood since 2003, and I obviously care very deeply about the neighborhood, and so I appreciate the work that you guys do. I know it's not always the most thankful task, but I do appreciate it. And with all of the things, all of the, the fast pace of Nashville, your contribution is very much appreciated. So thank you guys for that. The first thing I'd say is that, kind of in, my wife and I kind of decided we wanted to do this addition, first thing we did was kind of go around the neighborhood and try to find additions that we thought were particularly attractive. And so, knowing that we were in a historic overlay, we kind of wanted to make sure that we're conforming to what, you know, new additions that had been approved by you guys or by a previous commission, to make sure that we stayed inside of, you know, the guidelines that you guys have set. And so, the two houses that I presented to you there, one is at 3,000 Belmont. Construction was completed on that house in the last 12 months. The other is 2204 Belmont. And actually, from my back deck, I look at the rear of 2204 Belmont. I think they're both very attractive additions that, you know, keep in, in line with the neighborhood, and, you know, they're subordinate to, to the house that's there. So, so those two projects were what we kind of gave our architect and said, hey, can you, can you look at these, think through these? We really like these additions. We think they're very attractive. They've obviously been approved by the commission. So I guess the first thing I'd say is, we did everything that we could to work from precedent in the neighborhood, and not just precedent, but very recent precedent. The second thing that I would say is that we tried very hard to make the addition a very small footprint. And I don't know if I can go back to the original house, but you can see, the addition that we're proposing is, is very modest. And we're doing everything we can to just, you know, it's a single-family home on, on a nice lot, keep the lot, keep the addition modest, use as much space as we can. There is a slope, so rather than going back, going down, and doing everything that we could to use every inch of the home that's there and not create a huge addition that, you know, distorts the neighborhood. It's very, it's not what we wanted to do. We also, you can see that we, we stepped in two feet and back four, as is, you know, the guideline, is, those were the comments that we received from the staff, is that they thought that would be important. And so, we made every effort to, to comport to the guidelines, and from our understanding, there's no guideline that, that disallows this, this two-story addition to be the width of the house, and has been approved in the past as well. So I, I think that our ask is that, that this, the two-story addition be allowed. And the reason for that is largely because the house is only 30 feet wide, and the interior width of the house is only 28 feet wide. So reducing the upstairs floor by four feet is, is a very large reduction. It's 15% of the, of the width of the home. So it just, it, it would cause us to either make the addition a larger footprint, or find some way to completely redesign what we currently have in the upstairs of the home. Currently, what's sitting in the upstairs portion is two bedrooms joined together by a jack and jill bathroom. And this, if we set, if we step in two feet, there's just, you can't fit two bedrooms there. So it just means a redesign, probably a larger footprint. And so in my mind, it's really kind of a question of, do you really gain, do you get any advantage from stepping in two feet on both sides, when you're going to have to make the footprint of the addition larger to accommodate for it? So the other thing that I would mention, and you can see the different photos that I presented with the tree coverage, there are, down both sides of the house, on the right side of the house, there are four trees, and on the left side of the house, there are three trees. There's also a very large maple tree in the front of the house. You can't see it very clearly in this picture, but in the ones that I, that I gave you previously, or that are on those maps, you can see it very clearly. So, you know, for, I don't know, seven to nine months of the year, it, the, the entire addition won't be invisible at all. And for, for the remaining months, maybe slightly. But I have a hard time believing that, you know, setting that, that upper floor in, you know, two feet on each side makes the addition any more subordinate to what's, to what's already there. So I would ask you guys to consider allowing the addition as designed. But I will say, staff has been great. We've worked with them well. I've appreciated working with them on their comment. We just happen to disagree with them on this particular point, and reasonable, reasonable people can disagree. So anyway, would appreciate your consideration on this. Thanks.
Thank you. Is anyone else wish to speak regarding this project? Hearing none, we close public hearing. Discussion, commissioners?
I mean, I would just, I would like to commend the applicant and the architect for just, you know, what I believe is a nice-sized addition. You know, I believe it's subordinate to the house, you know, I'm, I'm throwing the wrong one. I think it's well done. So just, yeah, I'd just like to say that, just to start, as we've seen a lot of, you know, just larger and larger on these, you know, really great historic homes, it's just a very nice size. Yeah, that's all I'll say for right now. Let's save it.
I agree. I agree, it's a nicely sized addition. In very recent memory, we've upheld the staff recommendation for inset of two feet on second floor of an addition. I don't see how this is any different. They're giving them an option of keeping it as-is on the ground floor and just coming in on, it looks like two bedrooms on the, on the second floor. Our recent practice has been to support the staff recommendation, so that's what I would encourage us to, to maintain.
Yeah, I was trying to make a way to see if it could work, because I do feel like this addition is probably one of the better ones that have, that we've seen that's really trying to be complementary. I was wondering if they, that they look at insetting it for a while, and you know how we, we allow an inset for, was it, is it four feet that we have allowed in the past, and then go back? Melissa, all right. And then?
Right. So, yeah, allowing it to inset two feet, go back twice that, so at least four feet, and then come back out. But that, that's, the recent decision was for when that is single-story. The idea here is that a two-story addition to a one-and-a-half-story house, that two-story element, to be subordinate, should set in the two feet. Whether that's accomplished by insetting the entire, both stories two feet, or just the upper story, staff thinks that either way could be acceptable, meet the design guidelines.
Yeah, I, I guess that's, we have these kind of tools set up that we already, you know, you described it way better than I could repeat it, but where you can work it. So those, those, I'll say those tools with those methods. So I'd, I'd have to agree with staff recommendation, just because we do have ways you can do it, and this one seems like it could get there, but.
One possibility might be to take, take the two feet off the side and just add it to the back. It would still be a subordinate addition, if you were to do that.
Could you, sorry, could you say that again?
If you were to take the two feet off the side to, to come into compliance with what the staff is recommending, recommending, and add those two feet to the back, you would still have a subordinate addition.
So I make a motion to, did you?
Well, I just saw a gentleman over there nodding his head, and I was wondering if he wanted to, it's too late for him to say why he's nodding his head.
Okay. I make a motion to approve staff recommendation for 1511 Ashwood?
Second.
We have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next one that we have is 3807 Richland.
This is another application for a rear addition to this home in the Richland West End overlay. The proposed new construction adds 627 square feet to the existing footprint of the house. The addition will not more than double the footprint of the house, and is not wider or taller than the house itself. It sets in two feet at the corners and then widens back out, as per usual, to the width of the house. The addition's ridge will be two feet below the ridge of the house. On the right side, seen here at the bottom of the screen, it, the eve height of the addition meets the existing eve height of the house, which is 20 feet from grade. The addition generally meets the design guidelines for location, design, removable ability, setbacks, roof form, fenestration, and materials. The issue is on the left side, the eve height of the house is shorter on this side, at 11 feet. So where the addition widens after its inset, the eve height jumps up to be taller, similarly to the previous application, than the eve height of the house at this point. The design guidelines state that the height of an addition's eaves should be subordinate, even when it's inset, while it may be appropriate for a one-story addition to match the width of a house at this point, where the eve height is taller, makes the form of the addition appear larger, and to have a greater number of stories than what's on the historic house. Staff therefore recommends that the, either the full width of the addition be set in two feet from the historic house, or at least the upper story. Staff recommends approval of this application with the conditions that where the addition is two stories, that it sits in from the existing sidewalls by at least two feet, or at least the second story, and that staff approve windows, doors, roofing color, and that if utilities, HVAC are moved, that they be located behind the house or past the midpoint. That concludes my presentation.
Any questions for Paul? Thank you, Paul. Open the public hearing. Would the applicant like to speak?
Good afternoon. I'm Michael Ward with Allard Ward Architects. We're here to represent this project. And I'm going to have to hand some things out, because we had to sort of pull this together a little. a little late in the game. We submitted over 18 projects to you guys last year and y'all rarely ever saw us. We work really, really hard with staff to make sure what we do fits within the toolbox of things that we know we can work with and the guidelines that are set forth that we'd much rather consent and staff approve. I don't like standing up here and doing this and I really don't like talking about my clients' houses in public forums. So, we're really hard to avoid that. Therefore, we pay close attention to different things. And the reason we have to talk about this today and the project prior to it, it is a precedent-changing project. And I just want to make sure y'all are aware that's what's going on. So, the reason, and it becomes precedent because for one of the reasons, when Paul sent the thing back, it refers back to the Dallas project that we submitted a couple of months ago, which is a much smaller house. We've done this sort of thing before, but it's a much smaller house. So, it set its own precedent and I knew, sitting right there, that's what was going on. And as the last applicant noted, other projects that you had approved, I brought two of my own that y'all have approved, one within 12 months. And this first one, we got an award for. And this other one, much more recently, you can just hand them both out. I tried to color code this to make it a little bit easier to understand. So, you know, when we have things that have been approved or on consent and these things come up, then it's critical to talk about them in this public forum because we understand from here on out, we won't be submitting anything like that any longer. I think it's also good to note that we understand that, you know, in terms of approval, we're definitely in a sort of regressive design phase now. Things that we used to could do, we can't do anymore. And we've talked about that at length with staff as well. We haven't submitted anything taller than 24 inches in probably about 16 months. The days of 48 inches and even 60-inch high additions are long gone. So, we understand people want things smaller. We understand that people want small houses to sort of stay small, but there are sort of things going on we have to be sensitive to. The reason that 3807 Richland is important and especially using Dallas as precedent is it is not Dallas. 3807 Richland is a two-story house on the rear, it's a two-thirds dormer and we matched the eve on one side. It's also a much taller house and our addition is still actually shorter. I mean, our ridge sits almost two feet below the existing ridge of the house. So, it remains subordinate. And due to the way and the height of that roof, even the section in the back, which it's two-story to match the other side of the addition, needs to match. So, we don't feel like it's really consistent with, we feel like it's extremely consistent with the two that I showed you that you did approve. We feel like it is inconsistent with the one that was submitted two months ago on Dallas. I think it's also interesting to note, like I said, given that it is smaller and sets in, you know, we just want to be consistent from side to side. And I know it's easy to say, well, just set it in two foot on the second floor, but I don't think y'all have sort of looked at these Frankenstein sort of things we're going to be sending down for you guys to review. We're resubmitting Dallas and I will tell you, it's roof lines all over the place. It's a small house. We're not giving up two feet on two floors. It's just not even a possibility given the narrow width of that house. So, we've got roof lines, I mean, there are going to be eight different roof lines on this Dallas resubmitting, just to get inside the box that you guys have given us. So, and the other thing, I mean, in terms of the way these sort of, you know, running these ridges parallel with these existing ridges is a fairly common tool that we use to make this work. It was on the last applicant, I think it makes for an attractive house. It doesn't work if everything is set in two feet. It's part of those varying offsets that create these roof lines. So, when you tell us you just want everything at two feet, we're going to have to come up with a different roof line that works. Otherwise, we'll be giving up three feet in the center line and then another two feet on the outside wall. And that necking down, it's easy to say, we'll just add it on to the back, but rooms aren't arranged that way. I mean, width is a critical component. As he mentioned, yes, in Dallas, it's exactly the same. It was two bedrooms with a bath between it, four feet. It's two bedrooms. We're going to put that bath in a different place. And that, those ramifications can be even greater on the ground floor where you're really trying to limit footprint and the width is critical. So, I just want you to keep that in mind. One of the things to consider, if y'all want to come up with some sort of solution in the middle, was probably about two years ago, we submitted a project at 1711 Linden and worked the Shawn on that one. One of the solutions there was two-foot inset as required for a two-foot addition. It is almost an identical roof line of this, but a little bit taller. And then we came out another foot. So, that mass was back a foot, but trying to take four feet is a lot. And I know it doesn't seem like much looking at elevations, but I assure you, in plan it is and I assure you from the vantage point of lot coverage, it is. And the thing I would also note too, this is not one of those examples, but typically on a smaller house, not only they're smaller footprint, but they're narrower. So, you're giving up a lot of side yard that most people would rather have rear yard over side yard. So, you know, making it skinnier seems really easy on paper until you don't have any room left in the back. And that's basically what's happened with us on Dallas. It's truncated lot, it's short. So, we have a 20-foot rear setback, no garage. So, that's been helpful. I can certainly take questions.
Any questions? We may come back to you.
I'll be here. This is pretty important. So, anything you want out of me, you can have.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishes to speak regarding this project? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Commissioners?
I guess maybe a question for staff and the architect maybe could chime in, but, you know, is the two-foot inset, which I mean, I will, you know, we've always tried to follow just because making it subordinate to the house, all that thing, you know, in the guidelines, is that something that, I mean, it's just, has that been there forever? You know, maybe not forever. Again, every commission changes, but I mean, is this, you know, so what is, has there been discussion amongst historic, historic staff, historic zoning staff and applicants or, you know, is there ongoing things that have happened?
Yeah, just to give a little background, I mean, and I would say that staff certainly learns with every project and I'm sure you would agree that each of you learn with every project too, especially once you see them constructed. So, back in the day, I don't know how long, how far back we go, the insets weren't required at all. And then additions started to get a little larger and so there was this thought of, okay, well, if an addition's going to be one-story, let's have it set in one foot. And if it's going to be two stories, let's have it set in two. And then that kind of became the norm. And then along the way, someone said, well, what if we step back out again to be flush with the wall? And we said, sure, yeah, that sounds good and continue down that road. And now, our concern is that, and not that this is a large one, but as additions get larger and there's more of an expectation of gaining a whole new story behind a one-story or a one-and-a-half-story house, we thought when you get that eve, which is really a two-story eve, that no longer has that inset, the purpose of the inset is no longer there. And that's where we started heading. This is part of an evolution. Does that help?
So, Robin, is this an evolution of the, what's referred to as the italicized part of the design guidelines? It's more of an understanding than an actual concrete?
It's more of an evolution of your decisions. Everything we do is based on your decisions. And so, you know, again, that one-foot, two-foot inset came about, I don't know when, it was before my time. But now that they're starting, that they're jumping back out again, we got concerned about that two-story eve height and not having that step in.
Yeah, I mean, okay, yes, thank you, Robin. And I, you know, I agree with that, just the, everything's just becoming so much larger, you know, on these smaller homes. So, I mean, I understand the intent and I do believe it does need to be subordinate, you know, whether or not, you know, just an arbitrary two feet in every case, you know, it might be case to case, but then on a whim, we could, you know, the commission changes and then staff has a hard time guiding applicants. So, I think it's good to have kind of a rule that we follow. But, yeah, you know, I understand that it does cause issues with applicants and trying to make space work, but, you know, once again, you have a small house, it's not in and of itself a hardship. So, that's, yeah, I guess I'm struggling with that, but I do, I am wavering on the side of just trying to keep things subordinate and additions smaller.
On the second floor, you probably better answer it. Is that, what is that dimension off of that closet? Is it where you do have it inset there? I think that's the second floor. Yeah, second floor, right at the second floor plan. It doesn't show up on, let me see. It's in our packet, I don't know. But it's the closet, it is inset between the original closet to the linen. Do you know that?
No. I have a whole set of plans.
I was just trying to.
And I guess one of the questions, because y'all are talking about it, is it was always my understanding, and like I said, it's been this way since I've been doing this, which is a long time. And it is frankly, one of the few tools we have for houses that are smaller. This house isn't small. This is a giant house. This is a huge Richland bungalow. If it were small, we would be asking for some other volumetric things. It's not small. These others that are smaller, frankly, the ones where my sympathy lies because they just don't really have a lot of tools. And we're not trying to create 6,000-square-foot houses out of little houses, but, you know, the renovation costs and the redevelopment cost of these properties, whether small or large, are gargantuan. And if you can't get a little square footage out of it, you might as well just leave it alone, let it rot into the ground. But this is not a small house, but it was always my understanding that the two-foot inset was there for a reason. It was to sinuate between the existing and the new. It continues to do that and has never stopped doing that. So, I don't really, and I'm, we're good with that. It's been a great tool for us, but I don't really understand what the coming back out, how it dilutes that aspect of that guideline. But let me tell you, let me look at this plan. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
So, right, that wall sets back a full two feet.
Okay.
Now, and the eaves are two feet deep. So, I mean, you know, from eve to wall, we're talking 48 inches of, as someone would sort of perceive that roof area. It's really easy to look at it as a flat, two flat planes, but, you know, there's a deep eve and then a wall. So, I think it contextually makes a lot of sense and I think it'd be fairly clear. Like I said, we've got the, I think we still have the right, and like I said, I don't know where all this is headed, I think we still have the right to do what we did on the other side, which is a tall eve, which we matched. So, all we're really trying to do is if precedent is set, I mean, can't we allow to sort of use that set of details all the way around the?
When you say the other side, do you mean the other, like where the master closet is?
Well, yeah, that side. I mean, that side still sets in two feet. And we're not going to give you an addition without the full two-foot inset. And to create that pocket to do, like I said, my understanding of the guidelines, which is to create that differentiation between the old and the new and to allow them to be disconnected or at least visually disconnected.
I guess it feels.
Let's hope that helped a little bit.
So, a question for staff. Can you give us point two in the guidelines, you know, what refers, what this refers to? I know Robin's talked about precedent that's been set by the commission. What about in the guidelines themselves?
Are you asking about where it talks about the inset? What it talks about is additions being appropriate for the historic home. And years and years ago, that was one of the things the commission came up with, was the one-foot and the two-foot inset, which is here in italicized information. But at that point, I don't know that we knew all the ramifications of that. And then people started saying, well, let me set it back out again. So, we started saying yes, but then they got bigger and eve heights got taller and we started getting two-story additions on one-and-a-half and one-story homes. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, and I think this step back in is pretty clear. I think it's really beyond that where you can pull out to the exterior. So, basically what you're saying, the precedent's been that if it was a one-story, they could return to the width of the house. If it was a two-story, then you had to pull back in if it was a one- or one-and-a-half story house. So, I interpret it.
I'm afraid I didn't quite fully follow you. To clarify, have you approved something like this in the past? Yes. But we were thinking maybe we should not continue to go down that road. Because then that idea of having the one-foot, two-foot inset is kind of moot.
And is there any, is there any guidance on the depth of that structure from the setback? Because I know, you know, we want it to be subservient to the house in the front and some of them go way back, some of them are more narrow like this one. Is there any?
Well, for that, you've tried to control that with square footage. Addition's not more than doubling the footprint. And then in later years, you came up with the idea of there being at least 20 feet between the back of a house and an outbuilding, also to try to control that. So, you don't have something that rambles all the way back.
So, and that may be an older thought, but why is it mute? Because I guess it seems like this is, like, I feel like it is inset. Tell me about the mute, why you feel like it was mute, maybe I should, before I start babbling.
I worry that we maybe were just looking at it from a footprint issue. So, when people said, okay, we've inset one foot or two foot, whatever is required, can we step back out? Again, we were just looking at it from the footprint, which looks fine. But the reality is that the massing of that might have a two-story eve height. And so, when it's no longer inset, the purpose of that inset, which was to keep everything kind of tucked in, has lessened because now you have this two-story wall behind a one-and-a-half story house. Maybe that's only a concern when the addition extends beyond the main wall of the house. Maybe it's only a concern in other kinds of conditions. We look to you for your guidance.
I guess too, my, the reason why I was, I'm trying to figure, put my arms around this one a little more, you know, it is a big house, like, and it's not a big addition, yet we're still, you know, grappling with it. And it does inset and it does inset back. It just, you know, it's on the second floor. So, I don't, I mean, you know, I don't know. I feel like, so for me, when we started doing these additions, they got bigger and bigger and bigger and bigger. So, this, the house, kind of like you said about the small house, but this is not a small house. And so, if you look at it from a proportional standpoint, you know, which, you know, uses the same criteria that they use, it's just, you know, the scale and the massing, I guess that's where I was struggling. And I would have felt, that's why I asked about that distance there, because that is, you know, it is the two feet and that probably goes back 10 feet maybe or so. I don't know. I'm less with this one, especially like some of the others we've seen where today, where they've just gotten, you know, it's a little bitty house and a really big, this is a big house with not seeming to be as big. So, I don't know. I feel like, I feel like this is comfortable and I feel like it's, you know, it is within the guidelines still.
I'm having a lot of trouble with this discussion because of the previous case that we just denied. I can't see how we, whether or not this one deserves to be granted under the guideline. It seems to me that the tension is that this is not governed by the actual guidelines. This is staff interpretation versus commission interpretation and how things have changed back and forth over the years. back and forth over the years. And so, it sets us up for the corner that we're backed into right now.
Well, the other one, well, at least in my opinion, the last one, it was just way too big for the existing house. That, to me, that was more so, you know, the insets could have helped it, you know, like you pointed out, but it was still, still going to be a big house, so even that one. But, I don't know, I'm open still to the conversation, because that's good, but I just feel like this one, they've tried to inset it, it's not as, the scale is not over-massing the other one that's already existing.
Yeah, I mean, I'm also just kind of in-between on this whole issue, because, you know, I do think this fits this house, but then, you know, then every applicant, you know, regardless of the size, you know, so that would just, every applicant, regardless of the size of the original house, would say, well, you know, we'll get the photos. This one came back out, this one's not subordinate, this one's not subordinate, like we get every time. So, you know, I guess we either, we either have to make it the, you know, more of a rule that we stick to, or it's just a case-by-case, house-by-house, complete basis, but in that regard, that makes it hard on staff to advocate for applicants. So, you know, I do read a two-story house on a one-and-a-half-story house on this application, but, you know, I do think it's a very modest addition, but in the same stance, it's our, you know, it is a big house, and, you know, you're still adding an addition, so how much, you know, I don't know, I guess I'm just still on the fence about it. The two feet on this one really doesn't not offend me, you know, as much, but I still believe, you know, it's a two-story addition on a one-and-a-half-story house. That's how it reads. And then if it's the same width on the same plane, you know, I'm seeing, I'm trying to visualize if I would, you know, have a problem with that, seeing that it is a modest-sized length addition.
Just in all candor, the previous one that we just upheld staff recommendation on is no larger or less modest than this. I can't, I've only, you know, in my time on the commission, we've upheld this, and it wasn't my understanding that things, how things change, come in and go in through generations, but I have to be personally consistent, at least, so that's how it's going to be.
Consistent?
Consistent with previous meetings that we've had, with very similar situations.
Yeah, probably I'm stuck in a, maybe an older version, probably, I guess, but, yeah. I don't know, I guess, just help me one more time, I guess, Robin, so we've, is this something that we've just been doing the past couple of years, or is that what it's, just so that I don't feel like I was not paying attention all of the time?
The insets themselves, we've been doing for, since before my time.
I think I was here when we started the insets, but, and that's...
Last month is where we first made the argument that if it's truly a two-story behind a one- or one-and-a-half-story house, it's got that two-story eve, and it doesn't inset, or it pops back out, that that may not be appropriate. And that's the Dallas project that Mr. Ward referenced. And on that one, you did recommend approval that that eve height come down, or that the inset be put in. And not that, you know, not that one case sets precedent, I'm not saying that, but...
So, it's just was last month?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Or two months ago, I apologize, I don't remember, but recently, two months, thank you.
It wasn't totally daydreaming in the chair.
I had that, the case that Mr. Ward passed around, or referenced, 1711 Linden, was approved in 2013, October of 2013. So, and that's one with a two-story addition behind a one-story house. And I save all my emails, so I know that we had a pretty lengthy discussion about two-story additions stepping in behind a one-and-a-half-story house then. So, it's certainly been something, a conversation, it's not something changing precedent now, it's a conversation that's been going on for five years, at least. That one was approved with the second, the entire addition stepping in two and a half feet, then coming back out a foot and a half, so it still is in one foot from the primary wall of the house. For what it's worth, I must have, may have misread the drawings I wrote in the staff recommendation, that it was set in 18 inches, so I was six inches off on that, but just wanted to say, it's not a, not a new discussion by any means.
I apologize to all those waiting for the lengthy discussion on this. It's a serious issue, though, we all try to be as consistent as possible. Unfortunately, any zoning regulation is an imperfect tool for dealing with virtually an infinite number of possibilities of sites and building configurations. So, we do take this seriously and try to find the right solution for each of these projects.
The only thing that I want to say is, you were looking at the case before, and to me, it was just so obvious, that it just looked so wrong. And this one doesn't jump out at me like that. And I understand the need for consistency, but also, I also think this just feels a lot better than that last one. That last one was just so obviously out of scale, and that's just one point I wanted to make.
We can discuss. I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we approve 3807 Richland, and we actually, because of the height scale and the setback in rhythm, I think it is in compliance with the design guidelines.
Okay, I'm going to second that.
So, you clarify that and how that differs from staff's question.
Sure. The staff recommendation of the setback, I think the setback that the architect has already put in has met the requirements of the design guidelines.
Second.
Commissioner Tibbs, if I could just clarify, your motion is the same as staff recommendation, but without condition one.
Better way to say it.
Any other discussion? Okay. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
So...
Did you both say it?
They both said no.
Okay.
So, the motion fails, then? No, you need four, right? So, you won't get four.
No, we can't get four.
So...
What does that mean?
We have to keep dividing to get another one.
Right, you have to have a motion that passes with four votes before anything else is a non-action of the board, and that means that I believe in 30 days, it'll be automatically approved.
Your argument now, and convince us.
It's just important for me to be fair to the people who've come previously, who we've held to the same standard. And to me, it feels arbitrary that we're deciding this on the fly.
But it's been consistent, you know, good job of describing it. Well, can you open the public hearing, let him speak again?
Sure, we can do that.
I wish it'd been in different order. I saw what was getting ready to happen, and I knew it was going to be problematic. But, and I feel bad for them, but what I'm thinking about are all the other people that come after he and us. You know, Dallas was very different, and if you want to sort of, you know, Dallas had to have a ridge raise, Dallas had a lot going on, it had a much larger footprint, it had setback issues. This does not. If something doesn't attenuate the difference, then everything's just going to be that way. And I know, I mean, I hear it from staff, I hear it all the time, additions have gotten too big. Additions have gotten, not gotten that much bigger, the houses that we work with today are smaller. The reality is, we're working on houses that frankly have been ignored for a really long time. If everybody could have this house to begin with, they would pick it, just like that. But those are not what's left, and in some of the new overlays, especially 12 South, you're going to be dealing with some much smaller houses. And I think those tend to be the challenges. And like I said, those clients feel just as house-proud as anyone else, and it frankly feels, you know, these sorts of discussions, especially when we have a body of work where we've done that before, that you have approved, I mean, some of these were on consent approved, you know, within less than 24 months, they're approved on consent, we build it, and then we turn around and win an award for it, and then I show back up in December and feel like you've done something wrong, and you're being penalized, and slap your hand, you're not going to get away with this anymore. And frankly, that's a bit of an insult to our work, because we've been doing this, I think, with great results. And I think for you guys, the trick is, and staff does this to a certain extent, it's kind of like three strikes and you're out, don't ask for more than three things. Don't ask for width and height and all this at the same time. Be careful, you know, you only put so many eggs in your basket. And I think the height and the volume are really critical to understanding when these additional widths are required. And like I said, having the lot, you know, the wider lot thing is super helpful for us, we're going to have two looking at that next month. So, but it's these smaller houses where I think y'all have got the most work to do. I don't put this one in that category, and like I said, show the other picture, it's a two-story house. I mean, on the other side, it's a three, two-thirds, two-story dormer. So, it's been mostly two stories its entire life, and I don't feel like it needs to be penalized because of something that happened on Dallas with a house that's barely, what, 24 feet tall? I mean, I think as long as we're able to keep that ridge and roofline below, I just really don't think it's fair to subject it to the same thing. And I feel bad about the guy from Ashwood, but our house is taller than his to begin with. I mean, there are some differences in those massings, and I think that's where the biggest challenge would be for you guys, is determining where that cutoff should be. And I think it is going to be a case-to-case thing. But like I said, we, when you vote to go the other way, that door's closed. We can't come back and argue this anymore. And like I said, I sat there two months ago and realized, this house doesn't have anything to do with two or three that are getting ready to come before you guys, but we're going to wind up dealing with it all over again. And even though I don't feel like they have much to do with one another architecturally, I feel like the precedent we're getting ready to set is going to have a ripple effect through lots of, I mean, work that we still have on the boards, and frankly, for a whole lot of other people in the city, and a whole lot of other architects who are working on similar projects. And like I said, these are the most challenging ones we have to work on. I get to do beautiful big four-squares with big old two-story additions on the back. If all that's, we had to do, we would be, we'd just be happy as clams, but we don't. We have to work with smaller houses now, and these, this toolkit's really critical to us. Thank you.
I guess I'd like, I'll just still go back to the same thing, is I think it was still, it was all in the beginning, in the beginning, but in the beginning, it was all about, they were, you know, they used to say the McMansions, you know, and we would have these additions that had just gotten so big, and they overwhelmed the house so much. So, I'm looking at it more of just the proportionality of the existing. The setbacks are set up for tools to help mitigate that. I just think, you know, if this house went back another, whatever, four feet, eight feet, I might feel differently about how it's proportional to the existing one. But that's my argument about it.
Yeah, I agree with that. Honestly, seeing this, I had it on the other elevations, you know, really looking at this west elevation, and Mike made a great point, you know, it is a very, I just, I mean, I've always thought it was a small portion, I just didn't want to deviate from, you know, something we've been doing. But again, I also made a point earlier about it not being arbitrary, so now I'm kind of going back on that. So, you know, I think this might just have to be a case-by-case, just size, make, you know, if it feels subordinate, if it, the massing feels, you know, looks right to the main house, you know, I think I'm, I just, we might have to go to a case, you know, real true case-by-case basis on these, you know, the inset, and, you know, when it can come out, when it can't, you know, again, like you just said, if this were a longer addition, then that would feel overwhelming to the house more so. So, yeah, I guess I've, to juxtaposition it from the last one, which I still thought was modest, but did not have this two-story form in the back, yeah. I guess I'll, you can probably make a motion again, I'll change my vote.
And I do think there are some differences here. In reality, the back of this house is a two-story form with the window treatment that they have. And there is truth that the more things you go after, the harder it is to feel like you're within the scale. So, if you're doing a ridge raise and widening and, you know, great depth, then it does, you know, the whole intent of this particular guideline is so that that be not overwhelming to the house, and all those elements lead toward that. We're not dealing with all those elements with this, with this particular case.
I find myself persuaded, so I think you're right. Without the ridge raise, and I'm persuaded that it's a, truly a two-story house, I think we can have some board agreement here.
So, do we go back to the prior motion?
No, sir, you, someone will need to make a new motion.
So, I think restating the motion, I make a motion that we approve without the exception of something, what was it?
Number one.
Yeah, number one, yeah, there we go.
I'll second.
Without condition number one.
Yeah.
Second.
Without the condition of number one.
Yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, everyone, for bearing with us on this one.
Moving on to 521 Fatherland Street, which is a vacant lot at the corner of Fatherland and South Sixth Street. The application is to construct a duplex infill. Here is the site plan. The outbuilding shown in the plan is not part of the application before you today. The front edge of the infill will be 27 feet from the front property line. The site plan did not include the front setback of the historic house, sorry.
Could we take a little break?
Yeah, no problem, no problem.
There'll be a couple-minute break here or something.
Fine. Get started again. I have a microphone. As I mentioned earlier, just before we left, this is an application for duplex on a vacant lot. The front setback is listed at 27 feet, but they haven't shown how that compares to the neighbor next door, so we are asking for a site plan, just to make sure that the two front setbacks line up. The proposed infill will be located five feet, four inches from the left side property, meeting the base zoning setback. The applicant is proposing to situate the infill eight feet from the right South Sixth, right property line, or the South Sixth Street property line, the one that's on the top part of the image there. Base zoning requires a 10-foot side setback from the side street on corners lots. The structure therefore needs a setback determination. Staff finds that the proposed eight-foot setback to be appropriate because the location and scale of the building will be compatible with the historic context, and the setback is similar to what is found in the district. MHCC approved a similar side setback of eight feet at 601 Fatherland Street, which is catty corner from the site. I want to point out here a raised retaining wall and raised yard area, I'll discuss it further, but just wanted to show it where it was on the site plan. The new infill will be two stories in height, and will have a maximum ridge height of 31 feet from grade at the front. Staff finds that this height and scale meets the historic context... Staff finds that this height and scale meets the historic context where historic houses are one and two stories in height, ranging from 24 feet to 31 feet tall. The building will be 37 feet wide. In the surrounding area, there are several historic two, 50-foot, or two-story historic houses on 50-foot wide lots that are the same width or wider, and these include 606 Fatherland and 610 Fatherland. Overall, staff finds that the height and scale are appropriate to the historic district. Highlighted here is a retaining wall and raised yard area. In historic preservation zoning overlays like Edgefield, MHCC must review and approve all permanent landscape features like retaining walls. In this case, the retaining wall will create a raised yard space that will not have slab or pavers. The retaining wall and yard will connect to the infill at the front and side facades. The point of the raised yard is to provide access to the side entry on the left facade, which you can see here on the bottom image. Staff finds that where retaining walls are found, they are typically away from the house. When they are in the front yard, they're typically away from the house near the front and side property lines, creating an even yard height. The proposed raised yard here instead creates a small, kind of small terrace area. As this not, as this is not a feature typically found in the historic neighborhood, staff recommends that the raised yard be removed from the project and the side entry be accessed via minimal stairs. The infill will be oriented towards Fatherland Street, which is appropriate. The front door to the right residential unit will, will face Fatherland Street and will be behind a partial width front porch. There are also French doors, which act as a secondary entrance to that unit. The access to the left residential unit will actually be on the side of the porch. You can kind of see it in the top image there. So it'll be on the side of the gabled L. Staff does find that this is appropriate as historically in gabled L houses, you did find kind of the, the entry to the one unit being to the side of the porch. The left unit also has a secondary entrance on the left facade, just behind the front left corner of the house. This entry will have a bracketed stoop cover over the door and will read as a secondary entrance. The house will have a depth of 82 feet, eight inches. While deep, staff finds that this, that the side facades of the infill, particularly those that face South Sixth, South Sixth Street, are varied in order to break up the wall space. In addition, the last 10 feet of the house is a one-story unenclosed porch. Again, I'm highlighting here that raised bed area so you can see it, that it's supposed to provide entry to the secondary entrance on the side facade. Here are some context photos. The top left photo are two nonhistoric houses directly across the street from the site. And then the one to the right of that is a historic house across the street and just on the other side of the two nonhistoric houses. The bottom left photo is the historic house, a one-story historic house directly to the left of the site. And then you can see in the bottom right, the mixture of one and two-story houses on the, the side of Fatherland Street. Across the street, catty corner, is 600 Fatherland Street. This is the one that was approved to have the eight-foot setback, which is similar to what the applicant is asking for. It has a similar width and height to what the applicant is proposing, although it is a different design. And then 601 Fatherland is directly across the street from South Sixth Street. So in conclusion, staff is recommending approval with the following conditions, that the applicant submit a site plan showing the front setback of 519 Fatherland in order to make sure that the, those front setbacks match. The finished floor height be consistent with the finished floor heights of the adjacent historic houses. Staff approve materials such as the roof color, brick sample, front porch floor and steps, all windows and doors, and the walkway material. The HVAC units be located behind the house on the rear or on either side behind the midpoint of the house. The applicant remove the raised yard area on the front facade and instead provide stair access to the left facade side entry. And staff approve all permanent landscape features like fencing, pathways, pavers, pools, and decks. Because this is a historic preservation overlay, we review all the permanent landscape features. And I don't know if there's somebody here from, oh, there's somebody here from the project to speak.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Open public hearing. The applicant would like to speak. If you please state your name and address.
Hi, y'all. I'm Chris Wright. I live at 2204 Eastland Avenue, Nashville, 37206. And I'm just here, I've been asked by Key Quinn, who's the applicant, he's a friend of mine, he just asked me to be here on his behalf. The main point he wanted me to reference was 600 Fatherland, which was similar situation, corner lot. But Melissa has already referenced that. So he's just asked that you guys would consider that when making a decision about this two-foot variance that he's, he has asked for on the side setback as well. All right, thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on behalf of this project? Okay. Then we'll close public hearing.
Excuse me, Chair. I forgot to mention that we did receive public comment that was emailed to you, I think this morning. I meant to mention that.
And we received those, Madam. Thank you. Okay.
Regarding 521 Fatherland Street, I move for approval with staff recommendations.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Okay. 1817 Sweetbrier. The existing house on the lot was constructed circa 1952, which is outside the period of significance for development for this part of the Belmont Hillsborough neighborhood conservation zoning overlay. So in August of 2018, MHCC staff issued an administrative permit to demolish the existing structure. The lot is 100 feet wide and 175 feet deep, or about 17,000 square feet. This area is zoned R8, so that allows for two residential units on the lot. The application is to construct a detached duplex infill or two houses on one lot, like a side-by-side duplex. The historic zoning commission typically requires that new duplex infill development be fully attached, as typically two detached houses do not meet the rhythm of spacing of houses along the street. However, in this case, staff finds that two separate detached houses, which are modestly scaled, meet the rhythm of spacing of the houses along this block of Sweetbrier. So I'll go back to the Metro map. So this lot is 100 feet wide. So staff finds with, the lot being 100 feet wide, two detached houses will each visually appear to be on 50-foot wide lots. In the immediate context, the lot sizes vary greatly. There are some wide lots that are 85 to 125 feet wide, while others are more average in the range of 60 to 70 feet wide. 50-foot wide lots can be found at 1905 Sweetbrier, which is just a little bit further down the street, and also on the 1700 block of Sweetbrier. Given that there are several 60-foot to 70-foot wide lots in the immediate vicinity, staff found that two modestly scaled detached houses would meet the historic context. More of our staff found that two modestly scaled detached houses would be more in keeping with the historic context than one larger attached duplex. Approval is not likely, in this case, would not be likely to set a negative precedent in this immediate vicinity, because on the wider lots that remain, that would have the possibility of being, you know, either subdivided or, or, you know, having two detached duplexes on it, the only, on the, all the wider lots where that would be appropriate, they have contributing structures on them, so we would not permit the demolition. So this is really the only lot on the, on this block that would, where this issue would come up. So on Sweetbrier, there are just two, again, two additional lots, here they are, that are 100 feet wide or wider, and those, again, have historic structures on them, so we would not permit the demolitions. Just a little bit of background, the planning department, this lot is 17,000 square feet. Typically, for an R8 district, you could create two 8,000-square-foot lots out of that. But the planning commission's calculations look at the average of certain number of lots around and whether or not, long story short, the planning department in this case isn't allowing for subdivision because they would require 55-foot wide lots, where this would result in just 50-foot wide lots. So staff, though, found that it meets the historic context to have two separate houses, even if it doesn't meet the subdivision regulations. So here is the site plan. The two houses would be spaced a minimum of 16 feet apart, although bulk of the houses would be about 20 feet apart. The houses will meet all base zoning setbacks. They'll be a minimum of five feet from the side property lines and over 50 feet from the rear. The front setbacks will approximate the front setbacks of the houses at 1815 and 1821 Sweetbrier. Vehicular access to the site would be via a shared driveway between the two houses. There's no alley here, so that is appropriate. The applicant will, will turn to MHCC in the future for the approval of detached garages, so the garages are not before you today. The two houses will both be one and a half stories in height, with ridge heights of about 27 feet, six inches from grade. The immediate context is a mix of one and one and a half story historic houses, with heights ranging from 18 to 28 feet tall. The taller houses on the block, however, are those, those that are between 27 and 28 feet tall, are generally infill houses that have been approved by MHCC in 2013 and 2018. So you can see in this photo here, the bottom photo is a house that was approved, I think, in 2018 or 2017, that's under construction. That's about 27 or 28 feet tall. The one in the middle, again, is also infill, that's between 27 and 28 feet tall. And the one at the top is a historic house, although it's really hard to see through all the shrubbery. These are a mixture of the more, the shorter historic houses in the immediate vicinity. These are about 21 to 26 feet tall. The one at 1821 Sweetbrier, which is the one in the middle, that's the house to the left, or, I'm sorry, to the right of the site, and that is 26 feet tall, according to the data that we have. And these are some other houses across the street that are between one and one and a half stories in height and 18 to 24 feet tall. And lastly, there is another context photo across the street. The infill is about 28 feet tall. Again, that was approved, I think, in 2013. And then a house next door is just one story. So given that the lots in the immediate vicinity are generally wider than the 50-foot wide areas for the two infill houses, staff finds that new infill houses should have heights closer to the mid and lower range of heights in the immediate vicinity. Although the applicant is proposing heights of 27 feet, six inches, staff recommends that their heights be reduced, that they are no taller than the 26 feet tall from grade. So we want them reduced by about 18 inches, 18, 19 inches, to kind of be more in keeping with the lower scaled houses in the neighborhood, since these will be on what will be perceived as much narrower lots. The two houses will have primary widths of 35 feet, although one-story bay bumpouts bring the total widths to 37 feet. By comparison, the historic houses in the immediate vicinity has widths ranging from 33 feet to 51 feet, with the average being about 40 feet. But given, again, that these are going to be on perceived narrow lots and need to have adequate spacing between the two, staff finds that the 37-feet widths are appropriate. And so I'll just kind of go into the more specific drawings. This is a drawing for House A. On, here we go, I'm sorry. On House A, the applicant is proposing a brick foundation at the front with a brick porch floor and possibly brick steps. Historically, there was a change of material from the foundation to the wall above. MHCC has typically required a stone, stucco, or split-faced concrete block foundation when there's a brick wall above. Also, the brick porch floor is not typical for historic houses, as porch floors are typically concrete or wood. Staff recommends that there be a change of material at the foundation level and that the front porch be wood or concrete. And here are the elevations for House B. And here are the side elevations for House B. The drawings just called out concrete block or block foundation, and per usual, staff is recommending that the material be split-faced concrete block. And this is something the applicant has asked me to put in, so I will let her talk about that. So in conclusion, staff is recommending approval with the following conditions. The finished floor height be consistent with the finished floor heights of the adjacent historic houses. MHCC staff confirm the front setbacks in the field. The infill heights be no taller than 26 feet tall from grade at the front. House A have a change of material at the front from the foundation to the wall above. The porch floor and steps for House A be wood or concrete. The concrete block for House B be split-faced. Staff approve brick sample, windows and doors, and roof materials, and the HVAC unit be located on the rear or on the back half of the side facade. The applicant is here, if you have any questions. I'm happy to answer any questions before then.
Any questions? Okay. Open public hearing. The applicant may speak, and please state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Caitlin Smouse. My address is 912 Bailey Street, Nashville, 37206. I'm the architect for this project. And we, we've worked with staff on this and we just, you know, we, we're grateful that we could, kind of given the chance to do the detached duplexes. Our goal is really to create these modest duplexes that, that fit in with the neighborhood. And, you know, especially this context right here is, it's a little bit unique for Belmont Hillsborough. I mean, you know, just that, that block east, there's two-story, four-square houses, and you've got crafts and bungalows, you've got all sorts of, you know, different houses in this neighborhood, whereas these are mostly post-war, one-story, very small houses on very large lots. So our goal from the beginning was to create very modest duplexes. And so we actually, we're in agreement with all of staff's recommendations, except we did want to talk about number three, which concerns the height. So, and Melissa, I already made a lot of the points that I'm actually going to make, but, you know, that these houses around 1817 are already very short. You know, they range from 22 feet, I think, to 26 feet, the historic, or the existing houses, and then the taller ones are infill. And so that's what, I just really want to talk about the precedent that has been created, of course, and the infill that has been approved in recent years, all of which is 27 feet or taller. So 1808 Sweetbrier, I think there was a picture up there that was shown, was actually approved at 30 feet above grade. And staff's recommendation read, these heights are consistent with surrounding houses. The new house will be approximately five feet taller than the closest historic houses, but similar to other historic craftsman houses nearby. The 1821, which is next door to 1817, is 26 feet tall. And so given that precedent, I mean, you know, that 1808 was allowed to be five feet taller than the historic context. 1809 was approved at 27 feet tall. And I actually, I wanted to just read this excerpt from the staff's recommendation, just because I think it's really relevant. But this is the staff recommendation for 1809. Most of the houses on the 1800, 1900 blocks of Sweetbrier represent the post-war development of the neighborhood and are usually small compared to even modest homes of today's standards. They're primarily one to one and a half stories, with heights ranging from 18 feet to 24 feet from grade. The proposed house will therefore be approximately two to three feet taller than some of the taller houses in the immediate vicinity. In this distance, in this instance, staff finds a larger height of the proposed house to meet the design guidelines because the houses in the immediate vicinity are unusually small when compared to the average size of the historic houses in the Belmont Hillsborough neighborhood. And because the house will only be less than three feet taller than the immediate context. So again, the house right next door is 26 feet. 1805 Sweetbrier was approved at 27 feet tall from grade, and although a few feet taller than the other historic houses in the immediate context, it is in keeping with commission's approval for infill next door, 1809. And so, and honestly, you know, these are also, these houses that were approved are 38 feet and 39 feet wide. So, you know, not that much bigger actually than what we're asking for here. So, you know, our proportion of height to width, we're well under, you know, even a one-to-one proportion. So we, we really did try and keep these very modestly scaled. And I will also say that just construction methods today, you know, are much different than they were in 1948 and 1950, you know, when these houses were built, whenever that was. You know, we can't, we can't sell a house that has eight-foot ceilings, we can't build a house that has two-by-six floor joists. So inherently, these houses are going to be a little bit taller than 22 feet. And so that's, that's kind of all that we're asking for, you know, the, you can definitely see, I was going to reference 1715 and 1702, but you can definitely see that those, those lots are already narrower, and those do include a lot of two-story, four-square houses that are up to 38 feet tall. So we're not, we're kind of in this pocket of small houses. But yeah, if you have any questions, please let me know. I appreciate your time.
Any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who wish to speak on this project? Closed public hearing, discussion?
I just, again, commend the architect and hopefully, you know, your client as well for just, you know, creating a modest, nicely scaled homes for this area, and then staff for, you know, working with them to, because I think the two, I agree with everything, the two is just so much better than one large attached in this context. So, you know, I definitely agree with, with all of that. With, I'm reading and looking at some other infills and looking at the photos online, you know, there's just a varying, there's just varying sizes and heights in this, in this area. And so just with the, you know, the pretty modest scale, you know, I, I don't have a problem with the taller, you know, the height that the applicant wants personally, because I think there, that there, there's a lot of mixture in the immediate vicinity in the neighborhood in general.
Yeah, it seems like it fits right in with the context that they, 18 feet, maybe it's on the higher end, but it's still within it, so I'm with you on that. And I too, I like the fact that the rhythm maybe is... And I too, I like the fact that the rhythm maybe is more important this time.
And that they look different. I like that. I mean, I think that would be weird if it was two identical things, you know, but I think it's a really nice job.
I agree with you all. I like them. Good job.
Regarding 1817 Sweetbrier, I move to approve with all staff recommendations except number three. Yeah, it's, I move to approve, you know, as, yeah, how I just said.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Passes? Okay. Thank you. 602 Taylor Street?
All right. This was quick and easy, too. Okay. 602 Taylor Street. This is the Wetheren lot, and it's a really weird parcel that kind of does strange things. So the address is actually Fifth Avenue North, if you were trying to look it up, so just wanted to note that. So this application is part of a larger site development project at the Wetheren complex in Germantown. The part of the project that we're going to review today is the new construction of this commercial infill building. So the proposed building is going to sit on Taylor Street, just west of where Sixth Street terminates at Taylor. The site is currently vacant. It's covered in asphalt and grass. The new building is going to be sited in front of a portion of that existing Wetheren Warehouse building. That one's being rehabilitated as part of a larger site project, but we're not reviewing that today. Here are the west and rear elevations. At its highest point, the building is just under 28 feet high, which meets the guidelines. The length is considerable. It's approximately 165 feet, but that's appropriate in an industrial setting like this one. Staff finds the height and scale to be appropriate. Here we see the Taylor Street elevation and the east. On these two elevations, you can see how significantly the site slopes. It falls away both from the Taylor Street frontage, and then it slopes down to the west as well. The front of the building is going to be one or one-and-a-half stories, kind of depending on which end, while the rear is a full two stories due to that slope. In terms of design, staff finds a proposal to be appropriate. The building is well-articulated, has regular openings breaking up the massing. The one exception is that piece of raised blank foundation wall along Taylor Street at the left here. Staff recommends that this piece of wall be articulated in some way. The materials primarily include brick, metal, and glass. Staff finds these materials to meet the guidelines as appropriate for infill at this site. Additional immediate site work includes stairs and pavers. In conclusion, we recommend approval of the project with the following conditions: that exposed concrete foundation wall on the western end of the Taylor Street elevation shall be articulated. Staff shall approve the following materials prior to purchase and installation: brick sample, the color of the corrugated metal, the exterior stair and railing material, the plaza pavers, and all windows and doors. And here's an additional condition that was not in your packet, which I put in red and all bold specifically for Commissioner Jones. We would like this, the sidewalk along Taylor Street shall be brick. That is specified in the guidelines, and we missed that prior. With these conditions, staff finds that the proposed project meets Section 3 of the Germantown Historic Preservation Zoning Overlay Design Guidelines.
Great. Any questions for Jenny?
Any questions for me, and the applicant is here as well.
Great. Okay. Thank you, Jenny. So we open public hearing, and the applicant would come forward and state your name and address?
Jesse Womuth, 2310 Elliott, Nashville.
Dallas Cottle, 780 Bathwick Drive, Brentwood, Tennessee. One of the architects for this project.
And actually, I'm just going to skip to the landscape. If you could drop down the landscape. Oh, perfect. We were going to talk about all of this, but we're fine with the staff's recommendations. We'll discuss within the articulation of the turn-down on this, your left-hand side. But particularly, we wanted to quickly discuss the extent of brick. So the only portions of sidewalk, and I assume you guys can see this, but the only portion of sidewalk that we're improving would be from the Rolphen Daughters property line, which is the far left of the screen, up to 602 Taylor, the new building, and then over to where you see Sixth come in, and that's an existing drive entrance, and that turns down into the parking lot. We propose to not touch the sidewalk since we're not making any improvements.
When you guys have the mouse, could you follow along with them?
I can laser point it for you. No, no. Let's not do that.
The mouse will work better.
It looks better on their screen than on the --
I'm sorry.
I will add to that, that we won't, you won't necessarily have any say-so as to what part of the sidewalk they're improving, but just that when they do, that it is brick, whatever is required.
So then if that's the case, we agree with all of the staff's recommendations.
And we would like to --
Thank you very much, Robin.
Yes. And we reserve two minutes in case of Sonia wants it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there other comments regarding this project from the public?
Sonia Link, 1308 Sixth Avenue. The board, the HGM board, wrote a letter of support to the commission, supporting the project. We're very happy with it. We think it's going to blend with the historic neighborhood very well, and just really appreciate the owner and the architects meeting with us and working with us to come up with what's going to be a very quality project. So we are definitely in support of it.
Thank you, Ms. Link. Any other comments? Closed public hearing, discussion, motion?
With respect to 602 Taylor Street, I move that we approve with staff recommendations.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed?
Just for the record, I have abstained from voting.
Okay. Okay, great. So, Robin, do we have other business that needs to be attended to?
Did you vote? I think we'll need your vote to have foreconcur.
Yeah, yeah.
No other business, thank you.
Thank you. With that, call the meeting adjourned.
Good job, everybody.